All right, let me invite the Chairman, House Committee on Youth in Parliament. So please take a seat on this side of the divide.
He just came in.
Honorable, Oluwale Jumwala Ayodji Adawakala, can we please welcome him to his seat? Oluwale Jumwala, I beg your pardon. So please take your, take your seat. And whilst we wait for the other chairman to join us, we're also expecting the right-hand deputy speaker, who is chairing this session, to join us as well. But in the meantime, in the meantime, please, this announcement is for all the other youth groups. That you have not been recognized does not mean that you are not part of this composition. But what we are trying to avoid is to avoid a situation where we call somebody and you say that's not the person representing you. So we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. So kindly bear with me, all the groups, we have Dr. Jerry Alou here. You will be the one to be able to relate with me with your list of leaderships, so that we can recognize them. But I cannot take any paper from anybody and do any recognition. Please kindly bear with me. We're hoping that honorable Martin Asen Etin would join us quickly as well, so we can get started. So as I mentioned to us, all of you are important to this conversation, very important, and that is why this town hall meeting was actually put together by the Speaker of the House of Representatives. And they extended the petition to over 250 youth groups and organizations in Nigeria. Okay. We also want to please, can we welcome back to his seat honorable Martin Asen Etin, the Chairman, House Committee on Youth Development. Can we welcome him with a round of applause, please? The third seat there will be for the Deputy Speaker when he joins us as the Chairman of the session. Can we all take our seats on this side of the divide? Now, the topics for conversation ranges from the role of youth in legislative processes to challenges facing youths, perspectives and solutions, promoting youth entrepreneurship and employment through legislation, youth participation in governance, opportunities and challenges, educational reforms and youth development, and lastly, harnessing a creative economy for youth development. These are the very salient topics for our conversation at this auspicious time. But please, for us to kickstart these conversations would first of all, because the Deputy Speaker, who is meant to chair this session, will be joining us. He told me out of place to then get the panelists to start speaking to the topics that we have here. On the head table as well is the Director General in charge of Industrial Training Fund, Dr. Aziz Oluwatoni Ogu. Would like to welcome yourself. Have I recognized everyone on this side of the divide? I also want to say that it is because we can't all be on this side. If we are all on this side, who then will be sitting there? And so kindly bear with us. I would like to please get your maximum cooperation, especially by way of maintaining peace and tranquility and also keeping your conversations in serenity throughout this conversation. Whenever you have a disagreement, wait. Do not react. Do not raise your voice. There will be an opportunity for interactive session where your voice can also be heard. What we would advise you do is to put pen to paper and keep it safe with you, such that when we hit that segment of interaction, you can then please air your voice. Is that okay by us? Those are the ground rules that we have here this afternoon. So kindly, kindly, please be patient, keep your emotions in check. Even if you disagree with any issue raised, please do not react immediately. Put your pen to paper, and when we get to the interactive session, you'll be able to air your view or your opinion or your observation or give us a comment or whatever you think you want to say. But please, no profane words, no insulting words. We are a very civil set of Nigerians. I want to keep it at that. And thank you very much. So it is the honors of you, Chairman, Youth Development and Chairman, House Committee on Youth in Parliament, to place the trail with your remarks regarding the topics before us. So who speaks first? The option is yours.
Good afternoon, greatest Nigerian youth, greatest Nigerian students. Please permit me to specially recognize the Chairman of the House of Representatives Committee on Youth in Parliament, my brother, Honorable Alaou Akala. It pleases me to recognize the Director General of ITF, Industrial Training Fund, the agency, as you heard from the Minister for Trade and Investments, that is saddled with the responsibility of driving certification for skills for over 20 million youths. Let me recognize the Speaker of the Nigerian Youth Parliament here with us. I beg to recognize other members of this panel table and those of them behind us. You are welcome again to this session, the interactive session. You know what we just had was the opening ceremony. And now, we are going into the proper dialogue. Don't forget that the essence of our gathering this afternoon, a lot of you have come from far and near to participate in this event, is to dialogue, is to sit down together and talk about the future of Nigerian youth, not just about the protests. Because you'd have heard the Speaker in his remark say that this is not just going to be an event, but it will be a journey. In other words, this is not a one-off interaction. We expect that the Parliament, specifically the House of Representatives this time around, will be engaging with the youth more constantly. Um, between myself and the Chairman of the House Committee on Youth in Parliament, you see that we are not just sitting here ceremonially, we are part of this demography. So if we didn't sit down here today, you agree with me that we would have also been on this side to also sit down and listen to youth development plans in the country. So we are part of you, and we want you to be very relaxed as this flight takes off now. Ladies and gentlemen, respected youths of our country, it is no longer news that this demography forms 60% over of the Nigerian population. And like I always say, if you commit 60% of your resources to a particular place, then you'll be so interested in what happens in that place. Because 60% is majority in every sense of the word. And for us, we have said that if the government gets it right with this demography, then the governments are secure both today and tomorrow. And we are very, very happy to be in this interaction. We started this conversation very early in the life of this administration. Administration, now I'm talking about these tents, House of Representatives, where we kept engaging the Speaker, the right Honorable Tadjina Bass, PhD, that the youth needs to be given more voice. We need to amplify the voices of the youth, and we need to listen to them. And if you listen to the Speaker's remark, you hear what he kept repeating. The takeaway there is that we hear your voice and we are with you, okay? So for me, the Speaker started very well by revving up the standing committees for youth development matters to two. Normally, we used to have just the Committee on Youth Development, but the Speaker came out this time around to say that we need to also have the Committee on Youth in Parliament, so that we can have two voices of young persons in the Parliament. And you know that this particular tent House of Representatives is a youthful House of Representatives in the sense that we also have a very good number of young persons in this Parliament. It will interest you to know that the youngest person in the Parliament today, House of Representatives, is 27 years old. I'm talking about Honorable Ibrahim Mohammed from Kebbi State. We also have Honorable Abdullah Kim Ado from Karno State, who is 29 years old. In fact, we just attended his marriage ceremony about four, five months ago. So this is to let you know that you are well and fully represented in the People's House of Representatives today. So my panel discussion centers on, my panel discussion this afternoon centers on the role of young persons in the legislative, um, legislative process. The role of young persons in the legislative process. And you and I know that, of course, it is only when you have young persons in the Parliament that we can carefully tackle the issue of unemployment. We can also tackle the issue of digital innovation and what have you. I've said this several on the floor of the House that the youth of this country are in the SOS situation. And by SOS, I mean save our souls. We're in an emergency situation. But we can change that SOS to mean skills. We can change that SOS to mean opportunities. And we can change that SOS to mean support. So it means that from an emergency situation, we can turn it around to be a stepping stone to actualize skills, to actualize opportunities, to actualize support for our youth. Which is why I'm very happy with the turnout of youth groups and organizations in this town hall meeting today. I know that the notice was very, very short, but it still came out en masse. And today, ordinarily, we are, we reconvene to have a sitting specific to the 2024 Appropriation Act as amended. And we fixed time for plenary today for 11:00 AM. But you saw the Speaker and principal officers sitting down here with young people of this country up to 1:00 PM to listen to you before moving to plenary. So that is how much importance that you are to us. And I want to let you know that some of the things we cannot address today, between me and my brother Honorable Akala, we have taken it upon ourselves that this kind of engagement will be happening as fast as practicable. Okay? So let us not stay away and say that government is for a particular set of people. No. I decided on my own to resign from a blue chip, a high-paying job to contest for the position of member of the House of Representatives. And that was just to help me to contribute my own quota to youth development. My legislative interests, even before I was appointed Chairman of this Youth Development Committee, is youth development. And anything about youth development, we are there fully. So this is going to be an interactive session. Some of us that couldn't speak at the opening ceremony will have a clear opportunity to say something this afternoon. And we are very ready and willing to take out your feedback to the larger House and present it to the larger House, and then we take it, we take it up from there. Of course, the Not Too Young to Run Act that was signed into law in 2018 has seen a significant reduction in the age restriction for young persons to come into Parliament or other elective positions, as the case may be. You just need to be 25 years old and speak the right words to your people to be elected a member of either the House of Assembly or House of Representatives. You need to be just 30 years old to be a senator of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. And at 35 years, you are more than qualified to become the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, if that is what the act says specifically. So for me, I will want to pause there a bit because it's going to be interactive. I'll allow my colleague, Honorable Akala, to have one or two things to say, and then we hear from other members of the panel, who will introduce themselves before coming up with their own remarks, both at this level and up, so that we can give more time to you, our VIPs, and to tell us what to take away from this. So I welcome you again to this panel session, and let us make it as interactive as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my Chairman and Honorable Brother, Honorable Martin Asen. Great Nigerian students! Great Nigerian students! Great Nigerian students! Kulu kulu! Kulu kulu! Thank you so much. I'm always glad and happy when I'm in front of young, vibrant youths of this nation because the office of the citizens of Nigeria, which is the office of the youth of Nigeria, is the greatest office on this land. It's one of the foremost offices that needs to be respected. But the thing about that office is that I think we've been taking too much for granted and we've been sidelined for so long. Because I think it's that word "youth" that we use a lot that makes us feel that maybe we don't understand what we're doing or what we're saying. Because sometimes when you see them saying, they will tell you what is the role of the youth in this. And I'm asking, that youth you're talking about is a married man with children, with people that he's taking care of. They're asking what is his role as a youth? What is his role as a man or as a citizen? It might be a youth, it might be in the demographics, but don't use that to undermine him. Don't use that to undermine us. Because a lot of us have been undermined by that word "youth". And I know a lot of us here that are not children. I know a lot of here that have our own companies, that have our own things that we're doing, that have a minimum of 20, 30 staff under us that we're doing. But you left those things to be here because of what? Because of the nation. Because you don't believe. I believe in one thing, I don't believe we are the tomorrow of this nation. I don't believe that at all. That's a fallacy that they used to just deceive us. We are the today. And without a fact, we are the yesterday. So we're not telling you about tomorrow. How about our children, we that were already giving birth? Some of us already have four children, five children. Some of us have friends that have children in university. Our age mates that are getting married early. So what we used to say, but then what's that, what's that kid tomorrow? If you're saying that we are the tomorrow, because you're adding that word "youth" to deceive us. If you look back in the history of Nigeria, people that fought for us, that put us out there, were in their 30s. The Odukus, the Goyos, they were in their 30s. They were in their 30s. If you look today in the Western world, you see that the last of the Macron's leading countries, the lady that just won her election, leading country, they're in their 30s. So when, when, when is the time for us to say that we're no longer youth? We're not the ones on this nation? When we're over 60% of the nation? If we say nothing happens in this nation, nothing happens. So why put us under youth? Why always put everything that happens, develop everything, put us under youth? Everything, under youth, under youth, under youth. Why? We're not youth, no, we're Nigerians. We are young Nigerians, we come from the youth area, but we're also young Nigerians, we're young adults. And we should be taken serious. And as I tell people, when we tell this to this one, I said this that we're doing here is also a form of protest. This is a form of organized protest. If, if, this is, this is, this is a platform whereby you can air your grievances, say what is in your mind. And like you said, we have over 120 of us, 120, under 40, under 45 in the National Assembly. That's one-third of the National Assembly. But what do we need? We need your voice. We need your voice to push us, to elevate us, to make those things happen. This kind of meeting, have we been planning to have this kind of meeting since? Yes, we have. Is it part of the agenda of the, of the tent assembly? Yes, it is. Is it coming today because of the protests that is, that is out there? Yes, that's also true. We cannot go for that fact that the protests gingered it to come, to come this quick. Our plan was different. We wanted to go out to the six geopolitical zones. But I'm from the southwest, he's from the south-south. What, what is peculiar to me in the southwest is different what's peculiar for him in the south-south, unfortunately. That's kind of country we find ourselves. We are, we are strung together by, by, by a lot of differences. In the southeast, what they need there is different from what they need in, in, from, from northeast. What they need from northeast is different from what they need in northwest. So our plan before, before this protest came about was to have a six geopolitical town hall meeting with the, with the youth of the nation, with the young ones of the nation, with the young entrepreneurs, with the, with the young adults. To have six geopolitical meetings in six geopolitical zones, then bring the community to Abuja. Have a meeting with the Speaker and all the heads. That was our plan before. But yes, the protest expedited it, brought this forward. So let us not, and for that, as Chairman of the Parliament Committee, and also as the tent assembly, we apologize for that. We apologize for, for taking it, for making it take so long to engage with the young Nigerians. But it's better late than never. Better late than never. We are here today now. It does air our grievances. But it doesn't air it like, like the MC said. Because he aired it intelligently. It doesn't air it in a way that we can, we can talk whatever we do here today. We can turn it into a bill, we can turn it into a motion, we can turn it into an act. We just don't want to sit down like, like he said. This kind of meetings have been happening in the past. With, 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 but now you have young people, actual young people. I'm 39. I'm not yet 40, I'm 39. He's also, he's also 38. So you have people that are near you, that are close to you, that, that understand, because see, like I tell you, man, there are a lot of things we have to discuss, a lot of things. The local government autonomy, autonomy, um, the, the bill, then even the judgment that happened. Let's discuss it. It affects us more than it affects another person. It affects us more than it affects another person. Let's discuss that, let's discuss the impact on us. How, how is it going to be implemented on time? What, how are we going to save the local government away? From, let, I can understand, because the immediate way, I'll be our local government chairman. I'll be three times critical chairman and one time executive local government chairman. So I understand the bearing of the local government. I understand the impact of the government. I tell, I tell the people, if you read the full schedule of our constitution, you understand that the most powerful, the most powerful arm of government is the local government. The most powerful arm is the local government. But we bastardized it. Why? Let's discuss this. These are the issues I want us to discuss, these are the issues I want us to bring up and say, oh, we can, we can tailor this for you to help us. Because most people, we, 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 we are, we want a kind of government in Nigeria that is confusing. It is an issue, we all target the center. We all look at, okay, what is the center doing? What's the center doing? What's the center doing? But now, we have several hundred and forty local government chairmen that need to be functioning. So, the local government, how can we save them? How can we save them so that we can have direct access, so you can have direct access to your local government chairman, to your councillors, and to your council? When I was local government chairman, my local government was collecting less than, I was collecting eighty-one million, eighty-two million per month. Per month, that was collecting. I barely saw twenty million, or eighteen million. I had the video of that by the side. Now, my local government is collecting three hundred and forty million. Three hundred and forty million per month. That means in a year, that local government is collecting close to four billion naira. And that is, that's a motion not to, that's a local government in Lagos, in South-South, that received seven rivers, that received seven hundred million per month, one billion per month, up on two billion per month. So, to ask these questions, what are they doing? If they can't spend because of their government, what are we going to do here? Make sure that they have access to their funds, so we can also be able to, what, to put our satellite on them. That's one. That's talking about the local government. Talking about the executive. We can also say this. We can also discuss here also, as discussed, that, okay, if they choose all the ministers, all general ministers, but for five years and below. We can discuss it. It's what power we have. But we can make it up. We can only bring up what the people are yearning for. So, if we are seeing, we have an agenda. If you choose ministers everywhere, choose general ministers, forty-five and below, so that we can also have our input in things. When they are fake, at least we know that they are the young people there that can support us and defend our interest. Because these things that we're doing here, like I said, in Nigeria, Nigeria is too diverse. We have the older ones that do not understand the change that is going on. This social media change, the change in things, the change on information, getting information that to add back and call. Some other, the other journalists, they don't understand it. So, we have people in there to make them understand it. We have people in there for them to understand it. And it can only happen if we discuss like this and put that discussion on paper. Not just discuss, come here, take pictures, do lunch break, take pictures, say, okay, I came to the National Assembly. No. Let's discuss this. Let's come out and communicate. Let all the groups here ensure that whatever we discuss, you fire it out, you put, I don't know what you want to put under us, maybe you put Ayon under our bombom to make us move. You, the power is in your hands. The power is in the hands of the office of the citizen of Nigeria. It's in your hands. Push us. Like I said, we can try to push ourselves in the National Assembly. We can try to push ourselves in the National Assembly. We can try young ones. But like I said, there are some things that will always be blocked. Sometimes, when they don't understand what we're bringing. They go, ah, no, 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 you are too young, you don't understand, cannot do this. But the yelling is coming from you guys. If we are echoing your voices, that's okay, these are the people, you know, that thing goes out. These are the people who are echoing your voices, things will be done. So, please, I beg of you, let not just see this gathering as one of those kangaroo gatherings. You have young politicians here that are ready, that are ready to make a change, ready to make a difference. We are also tired. We are tired of going to be like this. We travel to other countries, you know how other countries are? We're tired. We're tired. What are countries to be like other countries? Like in Ghana, they're big, Ghana, Africa, they will call themselves the House of Africa. We're also tired. We're tired. Going to go to Stalin, so that we can be proud of our country Nigeria. So that our children come behind us, can come to a nation, oh, because when our fathers are telling us about the Nigeria of yesterday, I am perplexed. Are you sure this was the Nigeria of yesterday? In Nigeria, where a civil servant can just drive into a station, fuel his car, easily go home, doesn't need, doesn't need, doesn't need buy from any contractor, doesn't need buy from anybody, he's well taken care, the day he leaves office, he spent all his severance that same day, or a week after, his pension is being paid regularly. Come on, we can go back to that. It takes nothing to go back to that, it just takes determination of the people, not just the leaders. Always remember that the leaders are from us. The leaders are also from the people. We don't pick our leaders from China or from Korea, it's also from the people, it's from Nigerians. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Let's have your mic off. Thank you very much. The two chairmen of the committees. We have Eeyo Luwa Ayodji, represented here by Tyow Odunowu, is to speak on youth entrepreneurship and provide improvement legislation when we get to that point. Having listened to the two of you, the discussions on this side will be given thirty-three minutes in the first instance, but because as Director General, Industrial Trade and Fund, we will allow to give five minutes. So, please, your time starts now, Mr. DJ. You may wish to speak from your seat. If the mic next to you is working, we use that, but if not, we very like to share the handheld microphone with you. You want to stand? Okay, please, then come to the podium. Thank you very much. Please, your five minutes starts now.
All protocols duly observed. However, great Nigerian youths, great Nigerian students, greater of the greatest of the greatest of the greatest Nigerian students.
Yes!
I think I still remember that we're all in the struggle about twenty-plus years ago. Today, the government of the current president, President Ashwagandhi Bola Ameti Tounou, appointed me as the DG of ITF in October twenty twenty-three. When I came in, the first question I asked, my people of ITF, ITF was formed in nineteen seventy-one, can you tell me the impact of ITF in the lives of the ordinary Nigerian on the streets? I want evidence. As that was going on, I received a call from the Honorable Minister of Industry, Trade and Investment, my supervising minister, that the president wants ITF, the skill house of Nigerian, to upskill Nigerian artisans. At that time, I just came from a surgeon outside Nigeria after nineteen years. I got to know and see Nigerians, tyros, sleeping in their homes, plumbers, painters, welders, wild artisans from Togo, Ghana, Beni Republic, India, Philippines, and even China, taking up the jobs. Yes, according to the international level law, they have the right to do this. But what is happening to the landlords, our artisans, unintended artisans? I looked at our mandate. I found out that truly, the president has done the right thing by calling on ITF, because upskilling them, developing them, standardizing them, and regulating them is a responsibility of the Industrial Training Fund. Okay? Then I started a program, skill of artisans. It's a big opportunity for Nigerian youths, what we have put together. However, five minutes may be too small for me to go through what we are doing. I don't believe in what we will do. I want to talk about what we have done, what we are doing first, before what we do. We have done a lot. We came together, opened a portal for super skilled artisan. We gather Nigerian artisans, unintended artisans, majority of whom are youths of Nigeria. In our hypothetical drum, in this drum, training happening, we have to train them, certify them, and license them. The training is not just going to be like any other training we have seen in the past. We want to upskill them to international standard, because that has been the problem. Many of us here have tyros and all these artisans working for us from other countries. We want a situation where the youths of Nigerians, the artisans of Nigeria, will come back and take their position. Because those of us coming from outside, we know that when it comes to the good, the bad, and the ugly, everything, Nigerians are the best abroad. That is the truth. And now, we are focused. We started, and we have registered over five hundred thousand artisans, unintended artisans, on our portal. Today, as I speak with you, the training has started. We are sending about twenty-four thousand plus to the various private and public trading centers in Nigeria. If you know you have a training center you have not registered, register on our portal. We are to upskill five million artisans, unintended artisans, every year for four years. That is the mandate given by the president, and we thank the National Assembly, because we knocked on their door to make this easy for us, to enrich our act, and the first reading passed, second reading passed, and even the public hearing gone. Thank you very much, National Assembly. Thank you very much, the House of Representatives, for doing this for the Nigerian youths. After the training, after the certification, the international certification, we have, as I talked to you today, City and Guild, Pressing, Q and A, all these are international certification bodies we have collaborated with, and they are about to start the certification of our artisans before licensing. Training used to happen in Nigeria. A situation where people are trained, yes, and then what? Nothing happens to them after that. They are trained, then they sit back at home, waiting for, going there, collecting the stipends, get the training, and sitting back at home, doing nothing. Our hypothetical drum has three exits. The first exit is what the Honorable Minister talked about, the talent export. The second exit is MSME, and the third exit is the employment for the youths in the Nigerian labor market. Once Nigerian artisans get their license, then we now think of, where do you want to go? Of course, if you want to go into the labor market directly, we have partnered with Manufacturing Association of Nigeria and National Employer NECA, National Employers and Consensative Association, NECA. We will ask them, what is the trade area you need? Your labor market information. Tell us what you need. They will tell us the trade area. We come into our hypothetical drum, we fetch them, we state the working condition for them. This, and this, and this is what we want for the youths of Nigeria. We don't want you to take them as locum. We don't want you to take them as part-time. The days of part-time, where Nigerian youth, working for companies, have their hand caught, and they send them out without any remuneration, that those days are over. We no longer want those part-time and locum. We want to tell them that this is the way we will be treating our Nigerian youths. We are going very far. Training has started, and we have partnered with the relevant agencies we are supposed to partner with. The second one exit is the talent export program. These, we have collaborated with this program, and we have formed conduit pipes between Nigerian and the chambers of commerce of several countries. We've gone there to ask them what trade areas they need in their markets. They have told us, and we come back after the training, fetch our artisans, and we export them. Somebody said Japa is not very good, but I believe Japa, to a very large extent, can still help us. But when you Japa, don't Japa to go and wash toilets or dead body. Japa with certificates, international certificate. That's why we have invited these international bodies to come and certify our artisans, so that they will have international certificates, so that when they go out, they would send them out, because these countries, they want country-to-country involvement. They don't want you to just Japa and just start looking for work there. If the government of Nigeria take you to England, and these are Nigerians, we certify them, they have this certificate from your country, from Pressing, from City and Guild, look at their certificate, and they are qualified. We have discussed with them, we have exported them there, and we have stated how they will be treated, and they will be treated as we want. When they get this quality, because that was what China did, that was what India did, and Philippines, they all did this, and it's helping their economy. One thing I want everybody to know, those of us, the white-collar jobbers, when we go abroad, we start thinking of settling down there. Artisans, from my experience, don't do that. If they make one hundred dollars, they will send at least eighty dollars home. I have a lot to talk about. What about the MSME? We don't want a situation where, after you have been trained and been certified, you will be given a flipper as a barber, or you'll be given a sewing machine as a sewing machine, or you'll be given air dryer as, we want to invent proper businesses for our artisans. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know that the DG has quite a lot to talk to us about, but having listened to the DG, let me invite the Deputy President, National Youth Council of Nigeria, before we invite the Youth Parliament Speaker. Can we please put our hands together for the Deputy President? And you can speak from your seat, you have three minutes. Please, let's pay attention, please. Let's pay attention, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, yeah, ladies and gentlemen.
Excuse me, can I quickly bring you up to speed? Can I bring you, hold on, please?
Just, just, just.
Mr. Chairman, okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, hello, hello? This, this is the Tadi Session. Hello, hello? You are about to speak now. Hello? Hello? You are about to speak now. Listen, listen, the Tadi Session.
Please, can I speak to you?
You speak.
Please, the chairman are here. Can I quickly explain? Can I explain what is happening? But we have a panel of conversation first. It is after the panel that you speak. Panel of discussions that we called.
We are great youths. It's your time, this is why they don't take us serious. It's your time to speak. It's your time to speak. Before you speak, they will say one thing down, then you now ask questions and talk and talk and talk. Don't want, don't you want your panel to speak first while you now speak? You want, what do you say? Yes? You have, it's time, it's your time to speak now. It's your time to speak now. It's your time to speak now. Order, order, order! Order! See, yeah? Great Nigerian youths! We are all one here. I don't believe in any head of one, one person or one faction or one. We are all Nigerians. We are all Nigerians. It's time for you to speak. But the only thing that is necessary is just for them to just introduce themselves, so that you know. We are all Nigerians. It's time for you to speak. But the only thing that is necessary is just for them to just introduce themselves so that you know who you are speaking to on this side. That is just it. It's time for you to speak. My brother. My brother. My brother, come and speak, come and speak, come and speak, come. Come and speak, come and speak. Come and speak! Come and speak! Come and speak, come! Order, order, order! Great Nigerian youths, one thing, you know that this program is live. They need to take us serious. And time is going, a lot of people are traveling out of Abuja today. A lot of you are traveling out of Abuja today. A lot of you are traveling out today. So let the cooler be better. The cooler be better. You know what? We will reduce the panel, the panel, panel to two minutes. Start introducing themselves and you can talk, two, two minutes. Please, two minutes talk, two minutes talk, two minutes talk, and you can talk. Thank you Nigerian youths, great Nigerian youths!
Hello? Please, why, why? Build the youths. Build the youths. Build the youths. Destroy the youths. Develop the youths. Empower the youths. Yes, my name is Ambassador Enoset Ngraya, the Deputy President, National Youth Council of Nigeria. Well, uh, like you all know, we are not here for, we are not here for noise making. We are here for a serious business. And that business is to present to this leadership, the demand and resolutions of Nigerian youths. And I'm here representing my president, Ambassador Soubor, Sarabe Soubor, the President, National Youth Council of Nigeria. I'm here to represent him and the council has already had a resolution because, uh, we have been meeting before now, based on the issue on ground, the hardship in the country, the economic situation. And we have come up with a resolution after traveling to our partisan state and their city. So, uh, I am here just to be supported and that is to present it to the honorable, uh, present it to the honorable member, the Honorable Martin Etin, the Chairman of House Committee on Youth Development. And, uh, right honorable, Olamidju Walu Ayodaji, Aloha Kala, Chairman of House Committee on Youth in Parliament. Uh, sir, please, without wasting much of your time, uh, we all know the period we are in this country. The youth are not happy and everybody is not happy. And you can see the expression here, even in the faces of the young people here, nobody is happy but we cannot burn our country. We don't have any other country than this country. We must work hard to sustain the unity we have enjoyed in this country. I am from the eastern part of this country. And it made a statement because we have been waiting for them, we have a stand. Three days ago, we had the resolution in Ngu, the whole labor youth, and I also presented to them. Because the people here are the youth stakeholder and that is why when some people are making noise, people are monitoring us, what is happening here is going on live. So we need to behave ourselves so that these people can see us, what they have had in this country in the future. We don't make mess of our country, people, the whole world is watching us. Let us now continue to exhibit youthful exuberance anywhere we are found. Uh, thank you so much, uh, the honoreables, uh... The right honorable Martin, I wish to present this to you and it is our appeal that this document gets to the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria through the speaker. So this, this is a document, this is the resolution of the National Youth Council. And the National Youth Council of Nigeria have been wanting to find a position. So this is the resolution and all here is for Nigerian students. They have their president and the president, the speaker of the Parliament, who is here. So we are going to present this document, this is the resolution of the one and four youth organization affiliated to the National Youth Council. Uh, one of the things that is not added inside is that they also propose for, uh, electronic voting. So that we can go there while it is responsible. And then the president must work hard to make sure that everybody is happy in Nigeria. Build the youths!
Mrs. Chairman, uh, rather, Mr. Chairman, we have the facilitator, who is already seated and I think it is proper that we allow him to facilitate this. Thank you very much, Mr. Rafiu.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Rafiu Lawal and I will be the moderator for this session. Um, I think that the honoreables present here already, uh, kickstarted, uh, the panel discussions. And, uh, without wasting much of our time, I will just go straight to, uh, the questions that I have here for other panel members. And I will start with, um, I'll start with Mr. Ruthimi. Okay, Azizat, okay. Um, Dr. Azizat, the chair. Um, Dr. Azizat, part of the motivations, uh, if you like, for, um, the proposed protest by Nigerians, particularly the youths, uh, is the accumulated, uh, grievances. Um, from your own perspective, you know, I know we know some of these things, but from your own perspectives, uh, what are the issues? Uh, what are the challenges that confront young people of this country? And, um, how do you think these things can be addressed? In two minutes, man.
Of the greatest Nigerian youths, Kulu Kulu, Tempa, because of month of time, I will speak directly to the question. And I think that one of the reasons why we are here, we've listed a lot of the challenges that young people have. Even in this house, everybody understands the plight of young people, the current economic condition. For me, I will speak to the Parliament and the National Assembly because I am a talker. And I think that one of the things that you mentioned is that what? We like to, uh, uh, we like to regard bad behavior. Until young people are tearing their heads, jumping up and down, cursing a walk, before we try to open the floor for conversations. Sorry. Before we like to open, okay, excuse me, before we, okay. Before we like to do what? Open the floor for conversations to understand the plight of young people. I have met about three presidents in this country and this is the correct person that I see that is very reactive to the plight of what of the general populace. In the last six months, the president has carried several initiatives to mitigate the impact of the removal of first subsidy and the floating of what, of Lyra. Now, at the level of the Parliament and the National Assembly, what is our oversight responsibility to ensure that what this initiative gets to what? To the what, to the, uh, to, to the populace at the grassroots level? There are several challenges that, that, that young people faces. Access to funding, sales place to speak, inclusion in government, access to opportunities to repeat that again, a good funding, um, um, educational system. But you cannot get all those things by one sitting or one opportunity. So for us as young people, one of the things that we clamor for is the role of young people in legislative process and oversight function. If we have several committees that replicate the agencies and NDAs and government parasitars, how do we carry oversight function? If the Minister for Trade and Investment is here, the DG for I T F is here, you have several initiatives. How does this initiative get to the what, to the grassroots level? Today, right here, we cannot necessarily discuss all these issues. So for young people, one of the major responsibilities is what? Is the open door policy that we express from the National Assembly, which is the open, which is supposed to be the people's house? So how can we from today continue to have town hall meetings across the senatorial district or across the constituency to constantly receive input that regards to young people as well? And for me to speak directly again is that what? For every young person in Nigeria, it is our wish to be what? To be patriotic. One of the things that we always clamor that is what? Is Nigeria safe for young people? Do we have the opportunity to speak our mind? Do we have the opportunity to be listened to and then our what, grievances what, be, be made available to us? So as an introduction, because I have a list of some of the resolutions from the Parliament, this is the one thing that I want to open because we are speaking with the National Assembly. When we sit with the executives, then the conversation is different. What we want to speak to is that, how can we have this same town hall meeting across the senatorial district within this month of August, which is a youth month? How can we listen? There are other members of the Parliament, there are other members of NASS, at different senatorial districts that are able to speak directly, one to the initiative of government, whether it's getting to them. So the impact, whether truly, the, the, the cost of a bag is forty thousand naira, or a bag of that is forty thousand, I can't afford it. I stopped cooking for the last three months. So this, or even more, my apologies, eighty thousand, my apologies. They say it's eighty because there's black markets or something. So, as an introduction to the question that you have asked, the first and utmost challenge is that what? This country needs to take young people what, seriously? And one of the ways you can get that done is to continuously engage at the grassroots level. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Azizat. For that, um, I would like to beg that we try as much as possible to, um, you know, allow the process go on smoothly. One of the stereotypes against Nigerian youth over the years is that, you know, and I, I heard it here today, that we are not patient. Uh, please, let's try to take advantage of this opportunity and engage and engage ourselves. Thank you so much, Dr. Azizat. Um, I heard you clearly talk about, uh, your position around lack of, um, access to quality education as one of the challenges that young people in Nigeria, uh, are also facing. Uh, in this country, we have seen situations where, uh, universities, I mean, were closed for, for months and, uh, nobody, I mean, said anything, uh, about that. Of course, I know that a lot of, uh, initiatives, uh, aren't going to address that. But I'll go to Mr. Ruthimi now, just to speak to us briefly, uh, about, I mean, the issues, uh, in the education, uh, sector in Nigeria. Uh, what are the challenges, what are the opportunities? How can we overhaul the entire education system in such a way that it produces graduates? I mean, it can also function, uh, appropriately anywhere, anywhere in the world. So just give us a perspective in terms of the environment, the people, the policies that needs to, that needs to change. Over to you, sir, two minutes.
Yeah. Hello? All right, good afternoon, everybody, I stand on all existing protocols. Uh, first to say that, um, I think, first to thank the honorable speaker and all the members of the House for setting up this town hall meeting. But I think I align very strongly to those who have complained that this is not a town hall. This is not a dialogue. I think the first few hours of the day, we lost an incredible opportunity to engage the honorable ministers who are here and the speakers who are here. It is very important, it is very important that we know that those of us in this room who represent over a hundred million Nigerian youths who are angry. And they are not only angry, they are also hungry. When I arrived here today, it was even very difficult for young people to get into the National Assembly. This is said to be the People's Assembly and we cannot see our representatives. And when the young people arrived here, we were locked outside. It was a struggle for us to get inside. And this is a town hall for young people. And so these genuine concerns are real. This is the beginning and I know the National Assembly is now learning to have a conversation with young people. And my first recommendation is, this should not be the last. And the next town hall meeting should be an interactive session. We want to challenge our ministers, we want to challenge the honorable speakers. We add all kinds of data and statistics, fifty thousand people, where are they? Where are they? Even to serve in the National, even to serve in the National Assembly as a youth corporal, ordinarily Nigerians don't have the opportunity anymore. It's only friends of honoreables that get to serve in the National Assembly. We must speak truth to power and that's why we are here today. My second point is about educational reforms. Basic education in Nigeria has crumbled. Nobody, none of our honorable members send their kids to public schools. Why? Because the education does not have quality. And we have an opportunity to change this. Honorable members, you have before you universal basic education scheme, which today has over fifty billion that is not accessed by our state government. Why? Because the criteria for accessing the counterfeit fund is too difficult. And we must look into this judiciously. And the second thing is, while we look into this, we must ensure that this money goes directly to solve the problem of basic education in Nigeria. Nigeria has one of the highest number of out of school children in the world. Over fourteen million children in Nigeria don't have access to education and we must change this. Today, we have a national youth policy that has expired for more than two years. And our ministers of youth who are here today, we are unable to challenge them, to ask them critical questions. When will our national youth policy be passed? Finally, my final point, I was happy to hear today that the National Youth Investment Fund has been launched. It is important to know that the struggles and the challenges that young people are pushed, if we didn't push for this protest, the National Youth Investment Fund would not be launched. But now that it has been launched, it is critical that the National Assembly work with youth organizations that are present here to monitor, to ensure that ghost organizations and ghost businesses are not given this fund. Nigerian youth from across the length and breadth of Nigeria must benefit from this fund. And it must be for the benefit of the Nigerian people. Nigerian youths are angry, those who have been here today, they have started their protest by standing up all day in order to listen to this town hall meeting and we must give them the opportunity to speak, I submit.
Greatest Nigerian youths! Greatest Nigerian youths! Um, I want to say that, um, this is an interactive session, is a dialogue. And I want to let you know that all of us, including myself, that the Speaker of the House of Representatives, His Excellency Dr. Tajrin Abbas, is the one that convened this meeting. He convened this meeting single-handedly. So I think, um, he deserves some credit for that. And we have said that this interaction is going to be consistent, okay? And the last speaker just talked about losing an opportunity to engage the ministers. You know, as members of the National Assembly, we have three functions, basically. And one of those functions is oversight. We oversight the ministers. And I want to let you know that you are not in the wrong place at all. All what you have said, we have carried it, including the ones you are still about to say. So we are listening to you and I want you to know that nobody is missing in this link. Whatever you say here, we are going to summon the relevant ministers to come and get first hand of what the Nigerian youths have said. So I needed to put that in clear perspective.
And, um, I'll proceed to you, uh, Mr. Taiwo, uh, Odunshinawa. Um, Mr. Taiwo, sir. Given the... Okay, okay, so you start by introducing yourself first, uh, and then the agency you represent. Uh, given the huge markets that Nigeria presents, uh, not just on the continent, uh, but of course, uh, in the world. Uh, and of course, the demographic dividend that, um, young people of this country, uh, constitutes. How do you think the legislature can help in fostering youth entrepreneurship and decent work for, for young Nigerians? Uh, do you see any role for the legislature? Over to you, sir.
Hello, can you hear me? All right, good afternoon, everybody, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Taiwo Dunawa and I'm representing Mr. Yulua Boyeji. Um, I hope him run his policy arm. Um, thank you so much for your question. Um, yes, I do believe that there's definitely, uh, a role for legislators in Nigeria to play. Um, so for example, there, there are key policies that the Nigerian government... Please, one house, quiet, please, one house.
Order, order, order.
One house, please. Can I continue? Can I continue? Okay.
Please, please, let's allow him speak, please. Let's allow him speak. Pulu, pulu, please.
Okay, I will... Okay, 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 okay. I heard a comment by this handsome young man here, he said, I should come back to Nigeria. So I would try my, try my best to come back to Nigeria. Um... What happened? What? So, like I was saying... Like I was saying, like I was saying, there's definitely an opportunity for the Nigerian government and legislators to pass, um, meaningful policies. Number one, they could provide some tax incentives for young entrepreneurs who are trying to build their businesses. Um, number two, they could provide funding programs and partner with banks and private lenders to provide capital. So part of what I do is I'm an investment analyst for a venture debt company based out of Potola Valley, California. And I can tell you that the backbone of a successful startup ecosystem is funding. And so the Nigerian government, the legislators, can do their very best to provide, um, good funding and tax relief and tax incentives for entrepreneurs, um, that are coming, uh, and want to build businesses. And so those are, those are two of the things that I believe that the Nigerian legislators can, um, can do to help the youth thrive in entrepreneurship in Nigeria. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Taiwo. Uh, we heard you loud and clear. Good. So we heard you loud and clear, uh, funding and, um, tax incentive for, for young, uh, Nigerians. Um, I will now move to you, um, Mr. Usman, uh, from the National, uh, Youth Assembly. Uh, I know that we have, uh, I mean, uh, the Not Too Young to Run Act now, which has now, uh, I mean, opened up the space for young Nigerians to seek elected position and also participate in political process, uh, processes as it were. But, uh, if you look at the number of young Nigerians, uh, in elected positions and also within the decision-making institutions across the country, it is still likely sufficient. Uh, how do you think, I mean, this can, how do you think that this can be addressed in such a way that the political opportunity structures, you know, can, can be opened? Uh, what are the challenges still limiting young Nigerians from, I mean, participating in political processes and also getting themselves appointed in decision-making institutions?
Great Nigerian youth! Great Nigerian student! My name is Smam Bashish Agari. I'm the National Speaker of the National Youth Assembly of Nigeria. Thank you for this honour. But please, uh, before I start, I would like to plead with us, we are here to achieve result. So we don't want a situation after all this, we'll end up not achieving anything. So please, let us at least... Okay, okay. We don't want a situation, we don't want a situation... We don't want a situation where we end up, uh, not achieving anything. At least, whenever we are speaking, or whenever the panelists is speaking, just listen to us. I believe that all of us have something to say, all of us have something to give you, or, and at any, any day, you will say something. Uh, thank you very much for that. Uh, just like my speaker, my, my colleague just said here, Nigerians are angry, and we, we believe in that, we believe in that statement, which is why we are coming up with various, uh, ways to showcase our anger, especially the protest. But all I believe in that is that whenever we are angry, you shouldn't act with emotions. We are not here to just, uh, showcase our anger, we are here to listen to people, we are here to talk. People cannot hear what you are saying. I'm... I'm saying some... I'm pleading with all of us, we are here to achieve a result. Thank you very much. The second point is, uh, I'm going to, I'm just trying to plead with us, and, uh, thank you for the time. The second point is that we talk about, uh, youth participation in governance. Youth participation in governance, I can, I can say that if we look at the previous years, let's say, uh, look at ten years back, what we, ten years back, we cannot say, we cannot say that we are, if you look at now, the situation we're in, and ten years back, we know that definitely youth have participated in politics. Just look at the House of Representatives, how many people do we have? Which, which I believe, one of the major reasons that encourages is because of the way we started showing actively participation. We started showing that we are interested, we organizing, uh, organizing, organize, uh, civil society organizations like our own, to encourage people to go into politics. So I feel like if we can do that, we can come share our voice on, on social media, on various platforms, come together, stay united, we can, we can do anything, we can, we can participate in every government and we can participate in every activity. So what, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that youth are participating and we are seeing the change, and our voices matter. No matter how small, no matter how small, just we should keep pushing, we should keep making impact. This social media you are seeing is a big tool. We can all utilize it. We can all utilize this social media to make sure that our voices are heard. So with this, with this kind of social media, we can, we can utilize it to make sure our voices are heard and to make sure that we participate in this government. And again, what, the last thing, what I would, I would like to say is that whenever we are talking about governance or we are talking about government, we are not only talking about the national government, we are talking about the state government, the local government. We should hold our state governors accountable, we should hold our local government chairman accountable. This is very important. We are not only talking about the federal government. So whatever, as we are organizing this kind of, uh, town hall meeting, we should also encourage our governors and our chairman to listen to us, to organize this kind of town hall meeting so that they can hear from us. Thank you very much for that.
Um, Mr. Chairman of the, uh, committee, please, just before we proceed, I'd like to make this announcement in a passionate way, that, um, all the interest groups and the youth organizations here, you're going to be given opportunities to speak, but not everybody will be able to speak. So we want you to be able to identify the youth organizations. We get the questions from such persons that will also be directed at the speaker because it's about coming back, so that he can then take... Please, we are not given the opportunity to speak. Please, we plead with you for your kind understanding. We want to have a seamless event. So it's from your submissions that the resolutions or communicate can be drawn, that will be submitted through the Speaker of the House of Representatives, through this chairman, to the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. So please maintain peace and let's just have a peaceful and, um, a rank-off free event. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you want to say something?
While they are doing their tata tat, I also talked about something when the DGITF was talking, something about NYC. NYC, it was talking about skills acquisition and everything about ITF. And, um, I received a DM in my, from a young man like ourselves too, some couple of weeks ago. And I'm working on that bill, I've discussed with my friend here. NYC, a lot of times you are posted to places where, I don't know if they serve, they don't, they don't even retain you after service and things like that. NYC has become, so I, I believe NYC become a skill acquisition platform, whereby, after, after being your three weeks, you should be sent somewhere to learn, anything you want to learn, carpentry, um, um, tailoring, uh, POP, whatever you want to learn. And after that one year of learning that, that skill, the government has, um, obligation to release every person maybe a certain amount of money, maybe one point five, two point five, any amount, to go and do whatever you want to do with it. Like open a shop, like go back and go and do your banking, you do that, no. But I think that's something we should discuss also, yeah, it's open to the floor. I'm just, I'm just, that's the deal. I have not placed the bill on, on the floor of the House. But I just believe with your inputs and our argument with it, we can argue it out to a certain extent and can come a reality. I believe, you know, um, that one year is being wasted. Because sometimes you go, you go to somewhere you're never going to need it, you're never going to use, another one year you're not retained, you start looking for job up and down. So I believe if somebody can learn something, like you said, others who do our POPs, our this, they come from Kotonu Lumee. And we can learn it here, we can also learn our skills here, so just part of, um, our discussion. At this point, what is the perspective? I think we should open the floor for our people.
Okay, uh, we have just one more person, uh, uh, the Vice President of National Affairs, uh, Imam Mohammed, uh, whom I will call to speak on the issue of, uh, uh, the student loan that has been introduced by, uh, His Excellency, uh, the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Uh, we'd like to, I mean, get your reaction around, uh, the student loan. Uh, what do you, what do you think about it? Do you think it's sufficient enough to address, I mean, uh, the challenges of, um, lack of access to education that young Nigerians are facing? Over to you, Mohammed.
Uh, first of all, I would like to start, uh, with, uh, telling my name. Uh, my name is Imam Mohammed Isnawo, and I'm the youngest, uh, Vice President of a National Service of Nigerians and NANS in the history of Nigeria. I was born and held in Kanu. So first of all, I would like to start, uh, with a question, Mohammed, who is a member of this panelists. We can't be American English, we are Nigerians, we want an Nigerian English, not an American English. So we want a standard thing that we go for, for the youth, and we are calling for this. Uh, I would like to, uh, thank Mr. Speaker of those who presented for us in this, uh, event. As an announced Vice President, I am committed to ensuring that our education institution have necessary resources to provide quality education. We must also provide advocate for policies that bridge the gap between academia and industry, ensuring that our graduates are well-prepared for the job in markets. We are calling for the job after our studies. I'm here representing the forty point one Nigerian student. We are calling the government for the job. We want unemployment, we want our youth to be in government. We are calling the government to reduce the cost of buying forms for aspiration. If, for example, I want to aspire for House of Pips. I want that form to be scored as a high of fifteen thousand, that's, that's why the youth are...
Excuse me, please, sorry, 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 Tony. You were asked to speak on the student loan.
So, uh, I would like to add light about a student loan. Just recently, uh, the, the Nelfon Director released a statement that, uh, they have paid one point seven nine billion to, uh, to twenty thousand, uh, twenty thousand students. This is a commendable, commendable reason for this, and we are for sharing, uh, this kind of, uh, student loan. And they are calling more, 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 not only this, we want some money for upkeep. As a student, we know students don't have much money to do things and sort things out. So they are calling that present to, uh, just think of other ways to support our students and find a better way for our, for our students. Uh, to take a solution, I, I, I ought to ask, I'm asking, Lord, in the love of the nation, let us be changelakers, let all the youth be here changelakers. Thank you all.
All right, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Mohammed, for your contribution. We have heard from all the panelists, uh, across, I mean, issues of, uh, youth participation in politics, around, uh, opening up, uh, markets and addressing the demographic dividend of young people in the country, around overhauling, uh, the education system. Now it's time to hear from you, uh, distinguished audience. Um, so we try to do this, I mean, in the way that it's, uh... Okay, orderly, so I will just, I mean, allocate numbers. Okay, I will allocate numbers, first five, we take them, and then we come back again and take another five, and then we can, we can hear from everyone like that. So from, I mean, the front row, um, we'll take the man in blue, sorry for that, I mean, means of identification. Then we'll take the man in black, that's number two, we are number two, the man in black. Seven.
Two from this side, two from this side, come to this side, come to this side. Yeah, this side and this side.
Great Nigerian youth! Okay, we'll do this way to start. We'll choose one person from each geographical zone to start with, to start with, this is to start with, to start with, and you, you choose, yeah, this, as you said, it's a dialogue. You cannot choose. If someone, you know, your political zone, you said you're not political, let this, please, let's, let's, let's sit it to ourselves. Let's be organized. Southeast, southwest, south-south, northwest, northeast, north et cetera. When we, when we reach that aspect, we'll now go into the next one and, and then say, oh, it's town hall, maybe it's by group, by this one. The first one is by the political zone. The first set is by the political zone. You are doing it. If you are doing, yeah. If you are going, say, no. If you are doing, say, aye. If you are doing, say, no. Be eyes, be ears. So take, your political zone, please. So let's, let's, let's try to... Please, hold on, hold on, hold on. So let's start, uh, with North Central first, North Central. North Central, please. Oh yeah, I'm seeing a man there, come.
North Central.
Come out.
Because that's not nice. We want to be organized, why is it that shit when we continue in this manner? This is not nice. We want to simplify this thing.
And they are saying...
We want to, to hear your opinions, but we cannot be making noise and this continues. Please, North Central. North Central. Now, one person now, one person...
The man in front.
Are you the one to speak on behalf of North Central? What state are you from? Benur State, please go ahead and tell us your name, then you can ask your question.
Of the greatest Nigerian youth! Ever-faças Nigerian youth! Ever-vibrant Nigerian students! My name is Tomre Igule Martin Suteh, and I am representing the beautiful youth of Benur State, and I'm standing here on behalf of the North Central. Now, we have a lot and lot and lot and lot of questions. Yes, like I'm saying, we have a lot of questions, but I'm just going to ask one question. Just one question. Honourable Speaker, sir, my question is, we youth of the North Central are actually agricultural youths. Now, what is the disposition of the federal government in order to help the youth of this zone, especially in the ramification of agriculture? How can our life be better towards agriculture? Because if you map series of incidences regarding agriculture, you could see that the youth cannot go back to the farm again. They cannot farm again. I'm sorry, sir. We cannot farm again as a result of a lot of things which we know about. What is the possible solution? Thank you, address my case, thank you.
North Central has spoken. Uh, moderator, North Central has spoken, who next?
So let's go to southwest, 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 southwest.
We have the representative of the Afra.
Well, it's very important we leave aspect of protocols because the basic import of the state of relation now is the fact that there is poor development beyond the reach of agriculture. If we cannot solve that immediately, I'm not sure this conversation will have its object. I want to know that even as much as one of the education for this national protest is reduction of work price, do you think we can within the immediate, before tomorrow, which is 1st of August, pass a resolution here and get to the president to put up an executive order to reduce the work? If that is done, I also want to ensure from the ITF, the policies of the ITF might not get to the grassroots with this, your, with this, your, um, bureaucracy. Because that go man in that labor market do not know. Can the federal government establish a National Development Commission in all local government? So that through that commission, universal organization can assess areas that needs to attend to, you, the, uh, ITF, the ministries, and various department of government, with just a liaison of government at the local government level. Because why? Most state governments do not support whatever the federal government is doing. Nor the local government chairman has that intellectual capacity to deliver our needs at the local government level. The federal government must be able, through this, to propose that they have a, a National Development Commission called across the several sets of local government. And as part of immediate move to rescue the farmers in the farm. We equally want to suggest that inasmuch as security is a day, we want the federal government, we know we have civilian gate here, they are not doing anything because they are not well trained. Let the federal government establish a National Joint Security Task Force Agency that will train the OPC, the Eastern Youth, the, 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 um, uh, maybe other vigilante organizations, so that once we are talking about Greek, uh, uh, production, we can have a Greek extinction. Our youth want to farm, but where is the land? We need these things to be properly put in right perspective. Most farmland we have that are being supported are private farms, not government-owned farm. The only government-owned farm, we want to pass as a resolution. Let the federal government retrieve our farm from Lucet Gobasogbo, that farm belongs to Nigeria. We need it now, Allegra Farm Rescue, the Food Security. Thank you and God bless.
Please, you don't have to come out like this. Can we please welcome, excuse me? Please, the South-South lady. South-South, please. We want to balance the gender. We don't want us to balance it, okay, please, South-South. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Please, can we be seated? Honorable members present here, please, I'll go direct to the point. As we are here making noise here, some of our colleagues are preparing for tomorrow's run, uh, protest. And I'm so disappointed if we cannot get a resolution here. Please, the first thing, honorable member. Honorable member, please. Honorable member, honorable member.
Please, proceed, proceed.
As we are here, some of our colleagues are watching us, they are getting prepared for protest tomorrow. Number one thing I would recommend is that the federal government should immediately talk about fuel subsidy. Tomorrow, make an announcement on fuel subsidy, to reduce it immediately. That is the only way the protest will be doused down. Secondly, Nigerian youth deserve a youth commission. Where unemployment can be addressed. All our employment quotas are taken away from us. Look at the people that are shouting here. Except we have a youth commission, youth active, youth enhancement and development will not be addressed properly. We have watched Oga come here, we have watched the ministers, they've come here to tell us so many lies. These that do not exist. These are the issues of Nigerian situation. These are the issues of the country. From now the 10th of August, there should be a pronouncement on reduction of fuel subsidy. Everything we are discussing here is based on fuel subsidy. We should not deceive ourselves. Federal government should come out and reduce it for Nigerians. And then, please, furthermore, this engagement should continue. A youth commission must be established, thank you very much. My name is Tomre Duke, President, Nigerian Youth Organization. Thank you.
Alright.
Southeast.
Of the greatest Nigerian youth. My name is right, Honorable Rick Ngwajiofo, I am the Honorable Speaker, Ndibo Youth Parliament. Though I am here under the auspices of National Council of Nigeria as the Deputy Secretary General, better than I have to speak for Ndibo Youth Parliament on behalf of the Igbo youth. Number, uh, yeah, Southeast, that is Ndibo. Number one. Uh, Chairman, I hope you're all ears. Number one, what brings up agitation is lack of sense of belonging and marginalization. That is number one. My people from the Southeast, from onset, have felt marginalized. We are not participating in the protest, yes, but then I will tell you the clear fact of it. It is not because we don't want to participate, it is out of anger of having been marginalized for so long that we are saying, okay, let other regions witness this. I will give you examples. There are so many interventions for the youth that have been carried out, that have never seen the soil of Southeast. I have some data which I can furnish you later on. I will also tell you categorically, few minutes, I mean, few days ago, the amount of money that has been in speculation to ensure that the protest doesn't vote, would have proactively empowered more than one thousand Nigerian youths and make them employers of labor. Somebody said something here, let's be proactive, let's not just be reactionary. Thank God you said you have this in hoping to go around and listen to the youth. Minister of Youth Development held the first town hall meeting with North Central two days ago, it was a shambles. What happened? We've been clamoring for this town hall meeting. We can't have the ministry that we clamored for and President Stiniwo gave us that ministry. And we are not feeling the impact of that ministry in anywhere. It is just a bojat. People at the grassroots don't even know what is happening in youth development. Please, it should be looked into, especially my people from the Southeast. Thirdly, I beg of you, agriculture, that we have the problem of hunger, we have the problem of food high. It's because people can no longer go to farm, like the Nigerian man said. But I will tell you something, if you push a national assembly that about one thousand Nigerian youths, maybe two thousand Nigerian youths, to be trained on the modern facilities of farming, there are so many people who are interested in the farming, bring them out, empower one thousand Nigerian youths to go into farming. Give Nigeria one year, price of food will come down. These things are not research, they can be done. So there are other things we could say, but because of one top time, I wish that few of these things be taken note of. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you so much. Can we have North-East? North-East, 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 North-East. Please, please, let's have North-East, one after the other. Please, attention, attention, please.
Let's not speak. Let's not speak. Let's not speak.
Please, we want to contribute from this other floor, please. Kindly listen to us two, we want to contribute here.
Yes, please, please, Mr. Chairman, give us the opportunity to speak. Give, give those upstairs the opportunity to speak, we want to contribute. Please allow us the opportunity to contribute to this program. We also part of the event, we are upstairs.
One out, please, one out, one out, one out.
Mr. Chairman, please, we ask for an opportunity to speak, those of us upstairs.
Those of us following virtually, we want to also contribute, please, thank you. Those of us that are following virtually up here, we want to contribute.
If we continue like this, we won't leave here today. And I'm sure you all have something to do. Can I please plead with you? Just as is being done now, in the wisdom of a chairman, let's listen to the persons that are speaking on your behalf, before we hit the various youth organizations. And women, because we must be gender sensitive, that is very important. Due to that, I was even insisting that she speaks for the signal. So please, let us invite the representative of North-East. Can we have North-East before we go to Northwest? Yes, you are still having your teta tete. Northwest, are you ready? This is North-East, so can we have you, mention your name and then go ahead with your question.
Protocol, you will be observed, I'm Mohammed Ahmed Marafa from North-East. So many things have been said here, but, uh, there are so many programs which have been done from the middle of July to the day, all to see how we can stop this issue of protest. But, uh, to me, let me tell you this, let me send a simple message to these organizers. Yes, sir. Yes, I'm taking to everybody, there is a screen, they are looking at me, no problem, sir. Sir, we are having an issue, everybody is clamoring that everything is high, in terms of business, in terms of everything. Why, since we are in democracy and everybody is clamoring for, let's bring back subsidy. What is a big deal in just sending an information, you as member of National Assembly, to tell them, Mr. President, that we need subsidy to end all this strife? Because we, the youth, are saying we don't want protest. Our colleagues are looking at like, you give us money. And please, it is time for you to be real. If you are representing us as youth in this, uh, National Assembly, it is high time for you to go out and tell these people that we need subsidy. Number two, our, another issue that, another issue that is affecting the, this administration is, there is no good link between the masses and the government. There is no intentional social orientation between that will educate the masses. This is what the government is doing for the benefit of the masses. Local government autonomy alone should have supposed to solve a lot of problems between the masses and the government. But every political appointee have closed his door and still waiting for his people in his local government or community not to go out and protest. This country is on a red alert. Is either you people from here to go and gather yourself as youth representative in National Assembly to meet the speaker, to carry him, to go and meet the president and tell him that this is the problem of this country, he should bring back the subsidy, he should make sure that any minister that is not working should go, or else, well, if this is started happening tomorrow, we cannot end it.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman. Northwest, please.
With due respect, deep sense of African mind and mind results. I am Mohammed Sam Aswagabu Bishin Mohammed Kuma from those western part of the country, popularly called Adunasee. I am the President of a National Association. I am the President of National...
Assalamualaikum, wakka nchubani, waalaikum wa kachubu. My name is Obay Abubata Disqua, I'm from the Northwest. Sir, personally speaking, the deaths are not happy with the living in the Northwest. Uh, because many village were destroyed. The children are not happy with the living in the Northwest. Like the Empress State, like the Cassina State, like the Supotus State, many village were destroyed, many people were killed. This thing is enough to us. Uh, the reason we are here, we are here for solution. There is many problem in the Northwest, we need a government to come with this solution. You know, uh, there is lack of education in for many villages. People here can never afford to farm because of insecurity. Now, even, even, even like, uh, South, uh, Supotus, you know, there is many issue of kidnapping in that, in that region. Uh, and also I will call the government, this kind of things is going in the country due to that kind of issue of fuel subsidy. We are calling the government to... Hello?
Go on, please, go on, go on.
Okay, this kind of issues going in the country just because of the announcement of the President during the inauguration, removal of the fuel subsidy. That is why what the President had to look with it. Yeah, so, we, we, the people of the Northwest, we, the people of the Northwest, we are not happy with the living currently. And also, we need a solution to the problem. The solution that can bring this, uh, three question, you know, everybody can be peaceful. And now, now, nobody is living peacefully in our region.
Alright.
Let me tell you what, listen, if you look what, what, uh, what's, uh, what's on the ditch, what about everybody on ditch? What, 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 what did it ditch? What, what, what about a ditch? Everybody, they are happy for their, for their leadership. And now, currently now, people are not happy with the current administration.
Alright, so, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much, our brother.
Thank you.
We will come back to the remaining regions, but we want to give our women the opportunity to also speak. So please, let's entertain our women, and then we continue.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, Moderator, please hold on. Can, can we please settle down? They are giving out food packs, we need to settle down, so everybody can get. But quickly, in the wisdom of the chairman, we are going to move this microphone from row to row, so you can make your contributions. Now, hold on, please. Hold on, please. What we are trying to achieve, don't worry, even if, don't worry, when the mic gets to you, just mention your name and your group, and then go ahead to contributing what you want to say. It is being recorded, that is why you see some of the mics on. This program is being recorded, and I also want us to please plead with everyone here. People are watching you from home. If we carry on in this manner, your brothers who are looking up to you, even the younger ones like than yourselves, that are looking up to you as great mentors to them, would say, why were you behaving like that at that town hall meeting? Let's please, this mic, they have asked us to make sure that everybody speaks. So please, I'm going to move, if you have spoken before and the microphone gets to you, just be kind enough to say pass. So we make it, we get, I mean, give the microphone, please, row by row, I mean, as far as I'm from. So please, madam, go back to your seats, don't worry.
My name, my name is Abiy Enmi, I do anything. Hello, hello? Uh...
I am the Vice President of Abuja Youth Residents Association.
Those, those, those of us at, uh, other floors, those of us at other floors, now we here to...
There are fundamental issue that needs to be, uh, discussed before we go into what government needs to do. What make us to get to this danger is the removal of fuel subsidy. And if there is mechanism to buffer the hardship that comes along with it, government have to bring this buffer before pronouncing the removal of subsidy. I don't want to speak generally for Abuja residents, I want to speak for Nigerian youth. This thing is different. Ranging from insecurity for some of us as...
No, it's working now.
They couldn't sleep at night, some of us have joined... Government have not been responsive to issue of insecurity. And the key factor of your hunger is insecurity. Government needs to look inward and address issue of insecurity so as for us to have food on our tables. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much for your submission, please, it's one, one minute, so that as many as are here can air their views. But please, in doing that, if someone has raised your point already, there's no need to repeat it. So sister, please, alright, you almost spoke there, but just mention your name and quickly, one minute.
Under the present situational dispensation of this very barbaric incatious, we discharge into the distilled spontaneous as well as the emotional Susan Bond, popularly called democracy. They are not doing very better as well. I have to say that I would, because this is very high time, I represent the S Co members that have been a Sabbath with a Sabbath certificate at their own barisom seeking for a job, I have been their leader. Uh, what is happening today in this time, at the current time we are...
Uh, what is happening today in this time, at the current time, we are, we are in hard situations. I can call two things so that I will give you a mic. And the, know the reason why we have insecurity, people cannot go to school. And then know the reason why we have insecurity, people cannot go to farm. So that they cannot produce the farm production where they can be able to feed themselves. And the last thing I would like to tell people is that the poor subsidy, I appeal to Mr. President, what is happened to your think tank? Why are your invisible government that are liking, that like Nigeria to be a tender doom of a success? We want him to comply with them to set at how they are going to alleviate the situation of this poor subsidy. Because everything is very hard, everybody is in hunger, everybody is approaching to the swimming of poverty, one eye is open and one eye is closed. So that is it.
Thank you very much. Please your name and then your-
Honorable Speaker, Vice President Apex Body of Youth in Nigeria. I have only two things to say. The first one is, um, we want an electoral bill to be passed so that we can hold our people accountable. Then number two, the youth commission bill that was passed in the night assembly, we want it to be revisited. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Oshola Michael is my name and I'm the outside leader National Youth Assembly of Nigeria. Well, I will advise the government in a matter of urgency to do the right thing which the Nigerian people, the Nigerian populace demand. Let the subsidy be returned for now, so as to do the normal thing and to avoid queries across the country. Thank you. Hello?
Please, let's welcome back the speaker, the convenor of this program. Can you please free that seat, sir? Free this seat. This is for this deputy speaker. Please, can we take our stuff from here? Dear sir. Okay, the chairman have paid way for the speaker and the deputy speaker. Yes, sir. They, because you be responding to some of the questions who like the insecurity. And whether they intend to say this. Yes, sir, yes. Unfortunately, sir, please, can we pay way for the chairman of session and the speaker, the convenor of this program? Please, can we pay way for the honorable speaker, Mr. Chairman of session? Can I now, can I now please bring the other person to the seat? The microphone will get to you. That is what we are doing, everybody will have opportunity to speak. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. Now, the persons here have asked, I mean, asked their question, can you please make your contribution?
Build the youth. Build the youth. Uh, my name is Mohamed Gitar Akoshiya, I'm the Vice President, National Council of Nigeria and Coordinator for African and Arab Youth Council for West Africa. But today, I am speaking as the President Abuja Resident Youth. That is the organization that cater for the native, the non-indigenous in Abuja. Mister Speaker, what I want to say is pertaining to your office. Every other person has spoken. Abuja Youth has, have had a similar town hall meeting with the Honorable Minister of FCT and we raise an issue. Every region has their peculiarities of issues. But in Abuja, resident of Abu, indigenous of Abuja and resident, they were being charged change with the Public Commission nomination from another state. There is thirty-six state of FCT and Abuja as a state. They have indigenous natives of Abuja who can also occupy their office. Because the person that was, that just finished was an indigenous.
I want you to know that we have changed it already. So it's overtaking by events. Thank you. Please your name and then go ahead. Quickly, one minute.
My name is Inz, Vergins. I represent the great people of Nigeria. Now, first and foremost, I want to appreciate Mister Speaker for putting this, um, in place. According to my resume, it states and I quote that when purpose is unknown, abuse is inevitable. I want to beg us to understand the expediency of the reason why we are here today. We're not talking about why we, um, what the youth are missing. We're talking about why we are here today. Whether you like it or not, why we are here today is for the protest. And, and I want to oblige us and beg our fathers and leaders, Mister Speaker. It is high time we started to understand this thing and call, explain this bit. First, the president is our father and the grand commander of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. The president can come and talk to and address Nigerians. The president is our leader. The president should be able to talk to us and come and understand the yearnings of the ordinary Nigerians and the youth constituency. Two, I'm so sorry, please. I want to speak on, aside from the protests, is the local government, um, autonomy. We thank you for passing the bill and, um, we want to oblige, if it's possible, to give each limit to those that will be aspiring for that office. As I am, there are some offices you call me for, I can't even take them. Why? Because if I should take those offices, there are people behind me that I'll be blocking to get across to the other side. So in this old space now, I feel now, this is the right opportunity for young leaders to also participate in governance and draw government closer to those people. With this few parts of mine, please, I beg us to look into this. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. I skip you because you've already spoken. I hope you don't mind. I'll come to you, please, just as the rest of them are doing, stand on the already established protocol, your name and use, spend your one minute. Your observation or questions as maybe.
Good afternoon, right Honorable Speaker, I am Honorable Sharif Waziri, Member of Nigerian Youth Parliament. I'm representing Adamas and Transentation Zone and also the Deputy Majority Leader, Majority Leader of Nigerian Parliament sitting in this chamber. Uh, we are engaging the legislative arm of government here today. So my input will be on what legislators can do to expand the democratic space for young people. Uh, if, uh, we have gathered here now for this kind of dialogue with leadership of the House of Representatives. Yeah, it may not be possible to always come here, uh, all the time. But I suggest that the leadership of the House of Representatives can set up a youth advisory committee. I think I've seen this work in Finland and, uh, some European countries. You can set up a youth advisory committee made up of, uh, leaders or representative from some of these youth organizations and you can meet with them from time to time. This will create access for young people like us. And then secondly, I want to commend the effort of the House of Representatives on the issue of local government autonomy, financial autonomy. Please take a step further. Make sure that the bill for establishing the local government electoral commission succeed. Don't let that be failed. So that young people who don't have political godfathers in big plans can contest and win election and benefit from it. Thank you very much.
Please, one minute, we have a time keeper. We want everyone here to speak, please.
Good afternoon, right Honorable Speaker, my name is Khalid Ali Kuma. I am from Gwenda State. Um, my suggestion is in respect to utilization of statutory youth platform that government has helped to utilize its platforms like National Association of Nigerian Students, NYCM, and Nigerian Youth Parliament. Especially Nigerian Youth Parliament to be specific, which is a representative of Nigerian Senate with one hundred and nine representative young people representing their various senatorial district. If that platform was utilized, I think issues like this, pestless, pest to ten, August protest, all the demand can be handled by that statutory youth organization. Because now, people are taking advantage of electricity among grassroots people, even living in community. Someone can go to his community and tell them that uh, last week, members of federal executive council or National Assembly shared one hundred billion and they will agree it. But platform like this have some little knowledge and skill of legislative process, but they are not utilized. I, I, I want to suggest that National Assembly should take over supervision and, uh, of Nigerian Youth Parliament. I believe by that, young people can contribute to the decision making directly and issues affecting them. Because the requirement of that platform is strictly for young people. And if that platform was utilized, issues affecting young people and their contemporarily challenges will be deliberated and forwarded to the necessary, uh, government arms. Thank you very much.
Please, just straight to the point, your name and then you can fire off.
Good afternoon, right Honorable Speaker, Deputy Speaker. My name is Honorable Stantopokich Pujaspa, I'm a member of the President of Nigeria's House in Nigeria District at the Nigerian Youth Parliament. I want to first commend the hard work of the Deputy Speaker for bringing up Southeast Development Commission, which I know it will go a very long way to bring down the high tension in the Southeast. My request from this Nigeria District that I'm representing is for us to have adversary council in the Southeast. Which, from the Southeast Development Commission, if we have youth that will come together to get issues, to get things that is affecting the young people from this Nigeria District coming down to the National Assembly, I think it will help us a lot. From what my honorable colleague said here, using Nigerian Youth Parliament as a tool, we go a long way in the country. I wish that the Speaker and the Deputy Speaker was here when the Speaker of Nigerian Youth Parliament and the other panel sessions presented their themes. Alright, thank you very much.
Let me also just quickly add, the fact that the Speaker and the Deputy Speaker were not here, all your submissions are recorded, it's real time. As we are speaking, that's why the mics are on. The, the recording is on, is real time, so they will play back, that's where they will take their decisions from. So please don't forget, don't consider that whatever you said before the arrival is lost. Please, it is not lost at all. Thank you. Please, your name and then your question.
Standing on the established protocol, my name is Ambassador Sadiq, I'm the brother of Larry Somwe, National Youth Assembly of Nigeria. Yeah. I want to say, the reason why we have agitation is because of necessity of the government towards the plight of the people. The reason why we have insecurity is because our people are poor. Our leaders have engaged the strategy of making us poor so that they will be able to use us. If, if our people are not poor, it will be difficult for you to send me to go and kill. So it is important that Mr. President, while addressing us, he should address poverty by making food available, addressing basically the psychological need of the people. Making food at care, NHIS should be extended to ordinary Nigerians, not only civil servant. The average cost of drugs is very high. People cannot buy drugs. People cannot buy drugs. Make NHIS, let it get across to all Nigerians aged fifty to sixty, eighteen to twelve, uh, years to eighteen years. With that, there would not be insecurity and our nation will be better. Thank you.
Good afternoon, the right Honorable Speaker, the Deputy Speaker, standing on the existing protocol, my name is Ifan Daniel Somwe. I am the Speaker, Nigeria Delta Youth Parliament. I know our president is a listening president. And I believe that the request of young people that has been spread across the social media, their demands, that if the president makes some pronouncement, it will halt the protest that is about to begin tomorrow. Two, I want to propose that the House of Representatives should establish parliamentary youth development programs. These programs will help the House of Representatives to checkmate ministries, ministry department and agency on all their youth development initiative. Because there are some, there are some bureaucracy that has hindered young people to assess this opportunity that are limitless across ministries. Thank you very much, I just forgive you.
Thank you. Please let me invite very quickly to take a seat a member of Lagos State House of Assembly, a youth himself, he's been a member for the third consecutive time and he is also an actor, very highly respected. My brother friend, Honorable Desmond Elliott, where are you, please? You can come and take your seat up here. Honorable Desmond Elliott, bring him in, please your contribution quickly. Desmond, we want you up there, just behind the speaker, there's a free seat. Thank you very much. Please, can we give him a round of applause one more time? Thank you. Alright, please your contribution, one minute.
My name is Ambassador Faye Shalawo Agisunwa, the National Assembly of Nigeria. We are glad for this opportunity. We, the youth of the nation, we believe in peace and harmony. Please permit me to use this opportunity to lay these few letters. We really believe part of the problem of the society is government embarking on a national or state issue through the political wings. We strongly believe if this, if the government from the state level to, to local government level can embark on a physical infrastructure apart from using the political wings, I think this will go a long way. Instead of going through the political parties, leaders, escorts, that is not going to go to the grassroots people. We believe we should embark on a physical infrastructure directly to the people without passing through the political wings. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Abdolana Alalaya Azwala, Executive Director of Sycamore City. Right Honorable Speaker, sir. Please, I want to indulge your attention and wrap it. The situation we have in Nigeria today necessitating all the problems, A, B to Z is only one thing, capitalism. Nigeria has already moved into the extreme end of capitalism and it has to be addressed. And in addressing that, is that we address it to solve the problem permanently or not. The National Assembly has done a very great thing for us as a way to solve hunger. That is the issue of local government. Honorable Speaker, sir, I want to indulge the House to expedite actions on how to ensure that I next conduct local government elections and take Nigerians out of the hands of the governments that are ensuring that local government don't function. Local government can supervise farming, they can supervise food and every other food that we need in Nigeria. I so submit. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Um, because of, uh, of time, the right Honorable, please now, there is followership in leadership. I hope we know that. Please, let's be followers so we can be good leaders, please. And the convenor has the right at every given time to say, please, I want to interject or contribute. So please, before we give it to the speaker, the convenor of this program to speak, uh, Desmond Elliott was invited especially for this, uh, town hall meeting and he's here already. It is pertinent that we just give him two minutes to listen to him and then the rest, the speaker will speak and the rest of us will follow. Thank you very much. I invite my brother friend, Honorable Desmond Elliott to come and speak to your brothers and youths of Nigeria. Please, can we give him a round of applause, please?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The right Honorable Speaker of the tenth assembly. Uh, the Deputy Speaker, please permit me to stand on the existing protocols. Uh, my name is Desmond and, um, I'm a Nigerian. Um, basically, I, when I got this invite to come, I felt it was important that I also come and lend my voice to this flight. Uh, basically, the truth is, in this country called Nigeria today, we are indeed going through a lot and a lot has to be done. I am happy for the fact that our youngsters are clamoring for the kind of change that we hope to see. But the truth is that it's going to take some time. And we can't, we can't correct a wrong by- And we can't, we can't correct a wrong by making other wrongs happen. That's not to say we do, we do have complete rights to protest, but it's not about the protests now. It's about the civilian issues that we raised and they are begging for reply, they are begging for an answer. And I believe that is one of the reasons why we're here, not the reasons. And that is what Nigerians are looking for. That we feel that in a land of plenty, why are people still suffering the way they are? So, I, I heard what the young man said there about the local government. I think it's a good step, but then it brings to our minds that it's not just those at the top that will begin to seek to change or ask for what they've done. It has to start from the grassroots, which is where local government starts from. In other words, from when we are electing people, we must local, we are bringing to the onboard, from the local government level. Because right now with the autonomy, we are seeing development should start from there. This administration, I'm not here to hold forth for the administration, yes, it's my party. But this administration made it very possible that through states and the local governments, people can be reached, especially in terms of creatives and how we can do. Say that again? No, I'm giving instance. I'm trying to say that what the government is trying to do is make sure that they devolve power from the center and make sure that every other structure from local to state are the ones that can easily reach out to the people. But that being said, the civilian issues, which are the things that we are particular about, education, shelter, food, health, all these are pertinent issues. And indeed, we have, oh well, there are so many, so many. But the point is, we must start, we must start at a certain point. And starting at a certain point is why you are here, why we are here, to say how can we change in the quickest possible way? How can we find circle for people? How can we do this? And I'm glad that we are all coming out and I'm glad that we are civil about it. So please, I implore us, that we begin to get extremely interested in how we are governed. We become extremely interested in how people lead us. And we ask the kind of questions we're asking today. And we begin to not only question those at the top on the federal level, but states and local governments are also impacted. To this end, I'd like to say thank you so much for inviting me and I can't wait to listen more to your remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johannesburg.
For Desmond Elliott, um graciously, we are taking more contributions. Please, if you spend more time, it means you are denying the next person the right to speak. Please, let's keep it within the one minute. And those of them upstairs who came down, I've seen, I've seen you, you will definitely speak. I'll bring the mic to you. I've just mentioned one person. Please, can we have your contribution? You pass. Pass. Can I give it to the next person?
Good evening, Honorable Speaker. My name is Batru Joseph Ndiye. I am from Beni State. I am here and I appreciate the fact that everyone else has spoken, but I will have to direct this. Today, everybody laid a point and this is to address the issue we are going to face by tomorrow. And my, my point is that if an action should be taken, it should be an announcement for you to the, the general public of Nigeria, who are going to come out tomorrow in masses for the pains they are going through. And every other issue that is discussed here should be addressed in due course, but tomorrow, everybody is coming out. That is the challenge we are having. That is the problem we are facing. So what are the people listening to? What are you sending out to the people? That is what we are here for.
Good evening, all protocol, do you know it's loud. My name is Vera Edward. I'm the director to the President NYC on gender. I just have a question. What are the government planning to do about the daily increase of food in this country? Because it affects the women directly. Um, some of us don't know what it means for a woman to go to the market today after selling her goods. She doesn't have enough money to buy another one tomorrow. So women are going through poverty, real poverty, because the women doing petty business cannot go back tomorrow and buy the same goods and sell it in the market because of the daily increase of food. Thank you.
My name is Prince Batlomyo Ennehi, the founder of Yes For A Greater Nigeria Initiative. Ah, I want to say this very clear, that the politicians in this country disrespected us a lot. And it is high time that we need to let them know that we are not animals, that we are human beings. The country has provided so much for the politicians in this country. They are children, they are resources, they are family, they are doing very well. Some of the people on this high table, they have no moral justification to sit down here to talk to us. We have suffered enough and enough. And apart from that, and every single day, they keep killing our personnel, our police, our soldiers. How can foreign investors come to invest when the country is not safe? How possible it is? And I'm telling you, tell the president that tomorrow, by the grace of God, Insha Allah, we are hitting the streets in Nigeria, life! One Nigeria, yes for Nigeria, yes for Nigeria, greater Nigeria, greater Nigeria youth!
We understand that you are an activist, but that is not why we are here. Please, we're here to discuss. Please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Order, order, please, order. Uh, my name is uh, Kasimian Namani Niki. Uh, the county representative, come on, where to speak, I pass on network. Nigeria County Level. As the peace ambassador, uh, I support the peaceful means of engagement with governments in their programs and activities. So about one thing I want to say about the speaker and the those in power. For over many years, we are practicing democracy, sixteen years or more than now. We have not have tangible results as the earnings of Nigeria is expected for. Some are saying that we are practicing selection. We adopted democracy from the West, but we changed it to selection, which is not good. And we apply that let's practice democracy as it's supposed to be. And again, about the security, which is mainly of this protest, I will advise us, let them address security with technology. If you can bring technology in the other, not West, not East, other place, it can address. And last one is the about the programs. Please, madam.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Um, my own contribution or, okay, what I want to say or my request is that as, as in anything you know how to do, the government should please help us with so many facilities so that we can practice and show what we, we, we can do. Because when you are idle, that's when people can get you and use you for whatsoever they want you to do. So please, that's my request.
Thank you. Please come quickly, one minute and then we go to the speaker.
The right honourable speaker, deputy speaker, all protocols do be observed. My name is Kelly Chi Mokogo, a member of Opyamo Boma Youth Forum. I'm from Imoese, Southeast Nigeria. I, I want to thank the organizers of this program for the opportunity given to us to have an interaction with the right honourable speaker and of course, the leadership of the National Assembly. I want to say that if some of, like some of us have rightly stated here, and if we are serious about changing things in our dear country, there is a section of the constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria which I feel deserves an alteration, which is the chapter two of the constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria that talks about fundamental directive of the fundamental state policies of direct objective. Principles of state policies for direct objectives. Uh, if that particular chapter of the constitution, which covers for the economic objective, social objective, educational objectives of this country, is altered to make it justiciable, giving the citizens rights to, you know, engage the government and make sure that these rights are being guaranteed. If government can charge citizens for uh not taking or avoiding tax payments, tax evasion, citizens also should be given that responsibility to engage the government and require that, you know, these provisions are being taken care of. Again, youth participation in governance can only be achieved once the system allows for a very convenient ground for youths to engage. For instance, a state in Nigeria now currently, and sadly, the whole progressive congress in that state is selling the councilorship form for, is selling a for one million naira. That is not right. Championship election, three million naira. It doesn't give the youth the opportunity to participate. It should be looked at and adequate considerations made in this regard. Thank you and God.
Thank you very much, sir. The lady here, please, I didn't call you.
Mister Speaker, good afternoon, good afternoon, good afternoon, everyone. A lot has been said, but I feel I should just mention this three points. One is transparency and accountability. I feel everything that has been said here would have been much easier if there's a digital platform where everybody can have access. Okay, so I feel that is going to enhance uh the trust between the people and, and the government. And also, I also noticed that we said a lot of things, right? But we're not giving timeframes. I think action points should come with timeframes. We should have timeframes too. What? So I feel we should have action, um, action points with timeframe. Give us timeframe. Within the six months, within one year, this is what is going to happen, so that we can hold you accountable. Like you said, in one year, we're going to have this. What is happening? So we should, um, we should not go around a vicious cycle without having a way forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Honorable Speaker, just pull on. Ladies and gentlemen, Honorable Speaker, uh, the, the National Assembly, the tenth National Assembly is one of the best assembly, I'm talking of the House of Representatives. Kudos to the Honorable Speaker and what you've been doing to bring the Nigerians together for the interest of our country. We are in support of you. By God's grace, our country will never bond. We will stand to defend our country and to defend those who had the opportunity to put the interest of our country. Anyone who have an interest to destabilize our country, we will never support him and the United Nigerian Youth Congress will stand for the interest of our country. After this meeting today, I will mobilize our structure in the thirty-six states and seven hundred and seventy-four local government to work in the interest of our country and Nigeria will succeed. We have enemies of our country, there's no doubt about it. But how do we solve our problems when we are challenging or fighting those who had the opportunity to serve our country? Or those who have the opportunity to give? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Greatest Nigerian youths, greatest Nigerian youths. And of the greatest Nigerian students. Right, Honorable Speaker, Deputy Speaker. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. Actually, I have a lot to say, but with the way the events have gone, I think I will just limit myself to a few things. First of all, we must not lose sight and focus of why we are here. And why we are here is because of the protest tomorrow. Now, I want to ask our leaders, what, oh, sorry. My name is Komede Modugo Chukuklebo Dogo, the President General Southern Nigerian Youth Congress. Now, I want to ask our leaders, what are the actionable policies in place to alleviate the struggles and hardship that the Nigerian system or citizens are facing? Because the problem why we are coming out tomorrow to hit the streets is because of the hardship we are facing. Now, every other policy or whatever thing we are deliberating here can be acted upon later. But what are we going to take home to our people to tell them not to come out tomorrow? We have been here discussing, giving keynote speeches. That is not why we are here, sir. We are here for, to hear from you to say, okay, this is why you shouldn't come out tomorrow. And then we'll go back to our people and tell them, this is why we shouldn't come out tomorrow. Secondly, I want to point out, sorry please, now, we must look at the purchasing power of the naira. No matter what you are doing, no matter whatever empowerment, uh, policies, loans that are being given to people, if the standard of living is costly, the people will not survive. Now, I know during the past week, we've been celebrating the seventy thousand naira minimum wage that has been signed in by the president. Kudos to everybody involved, please. But I want to say something. When you compare the seventy thousand naira now to that of the eighty thousand naira years back, it does not match. So please, the seventy thousand, no, so the seventy thousand naira is not something that should be celebrated. Instead, we should look at bringing down the cost of living, so that the seventy thousand naira can be able to put, cover a lot of things that the African Nigerian cannot purchase. This is what I want to posit because of time. Thank you very much.
He has spoken for you. Please, madam.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Um, okay, my name is Patricia Woyam from Annambra State. Um, I just want to say that the main purpose of this gathering here now is to stop tomorrow's protest. And I think the root of all this hardship in Nigeria is the removal of the fourth subsidy. Of which, this is what is causing a lot of things to go high, as in the prices. So I don't know if it will take our dear President Bola Medenibu to come out maybe this night to tell us that the fuel price has come to maybe two hundred naira. I think that will stop the protest. Honestly, to go a long way.
Thank you very much.
Greatest Nigerian youth. Mister Speaker, I want to commend you for your initiation to gather various youth organization to come here today to put our voice over the recent development of our nation-state. My name is Honorable Blessino Yefeso, the National President of Nigerian Youth in Politics. For us, we support protests of national development. Protest of destruction of our hard-earned infrastructure. Protest of that will undermine the territorial integrity, the sovereignty of our dear state is what we are against. And I think the take home for the youth, various youth organization, youth leaders are here today is to join for us to fight against those inciting the public against the sovereignty of our state. I employ the youth organization, youth leaders here. We do not have two nations to stay. If we destroy Nigeria tomorrow, we have no place to stay. So I want to employ you all to please understand that this not, that Mister President, we ha, he has listening here for the youth. And we should organize ourselves to ask, to demand rightly, so that we will be able to have an, uh, it will be, it will be a win-win-win for us. The momentum is high. The youth of this nation can organize itself and put together demands that the president will listen to. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Just before you, please.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, writing on what he just said, I would want to continue from there, that nations were not built by spirits, but by men and women like and women like us who love our nation. Um, just to add to it, sir, Mr. Speaker, Deputy Speaker, my, um, fellow Nigerian, um, young men and women, I have a, I have so much to say, but I'm just going to narrow it down to just one story that I think we can solve. And this story is a girl called Fava Ophili. Allow me, please allow me. Fava Ophili is a young athlete, a promising young athlete, Nigerian athlete, who have been neglected from participating in this forthcoming Olympic, whereas she has been, um, she, she has scaled through all the process. This girl has been practicing for the past four years just to be part of this Olympic. Only for her to find out that she won't be able to make it for one reason or the other because her name was taken out of it. Fava Ophili suffers the fate of many, what many Nigerians youth suffer today. We believe that employment, unemployment is one of the major issue we're having in Nigeria. But no, we are productive young men and women, but the system has tightened our ability to be able to produce to a maximum capacity. So, um, um, Mr. Speaker, please, if we can at least just address this issue of Fava Ophili, if we could start from there, that Fava Ophili be given the opportunity to represent Nigeria in the 100-meter Olympic which she qualifies for, we can start from there and we can continue from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come out this way. Please come out this way.
Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Prince Ashobuge. I am a Nigerian. It's amazing how when it is time for election, politicians know how to get the youth involved. But when it's time for distribution, we don't know how it will go around the youth. So my question to the Honorable Speaker, please, is that during the subsidy removal, when the, when the President removed the subsidy, they said they gave governor over five billion to share for each state. What happened to these funds? That is my first question. Now, they said they are giving 20 trucks of rice to each governors. How will this rice get across to the, the empty youth that are on the street? That is two. Three, the, the next thing I want to ask is that, sir, we are, we are talking about we not hitting the streets tomorrow. Please, we are saying that you don't want the youths to hit the streets tomorrow, but what are we doing to make sure that this thing doesn't happen? Which, these policies we are making, what, how is it going to affect us real time now as we are seeing it? Because whether we like it or not, the governor, the government, they are rolling out a lot of things, but how is it affecting us now? I want to thank this house because actually, this is a people's house. I want to thank you for this engagement, but please tell us how these things are going to affect the Nigerian youths as are today.
Thank you very much. I think at this point, we would like that the Speaker responds to some of the things that has been said and then we continue from there. May I, at this point in time, with your kind permission, invite Your Excellency, the convenor of this program, the Right Honorable Speaker, Your Excellency Abbas Darjudin. Okay, he has graciously given you one minute, please keep it one.
Thank you very much, respected Speaker and distinguished young people, um, in the House. I'd like to quickly speak to you directly, sir. I do not have complaints, I only have solutions. I have contributions, basically. So the first thing is that, you see, protest is inevitable tomorrow. You, we can only douse it down a bit, but the people that will be outside tomorrow protesting, their student, their your children, their young people that will be out there tomorrow. My question is that, what would be the response of the government to that protest? Would it be guns against protesters? Because the reality is that, they need not, we cannot want peace when we hold guns against them tomorrow. It is going to happen. I am not maybe saying that young people should not, um, express their grievances, they can go, but the response of the government to that protest is my own concern. I do not want young people to go outside tomorrow dying, being shot and all of those things. That is one. The second thing is that young people wait for a moment. I do not think we understand the meaning of, um, subsidy removal because people have been clamoring that, eh, they should bring back return subsidy and all of those things. You see, we cannot continue to service international producers. Rather, the money being paid to service subsidy should go to Carduna Refinery, Wari Refinery, Potakot Refinery. So if you are saying that, if we want fuel to go down, yeah, of course, the, the reason why young people are going to be outside tomorrow is because of the rebellion of the stomach. They are hungry and the rebellion of the stomach is the biggest rebellion anybody can fight against. So if, I'm sorry, sir, just if I don't say this, I'm not going to sleep tonight. So I'm just basically saying that the money should go into refineries and all of those things, um, Mr. Speaker. The second thing being that youth employment, I understand the third point. The third point being that youth employment, Mr. Speaker, you see, I understand that the government is doing quite a lot. The first, um, intervention I am very well aware of is the NYIF, Nigerian Youth Investment Fund. Yes, it is laudable, it is applaudable. However, there are other things we can do. We do trade fairs, we bring, um, investors around and buy things at a subsidized rate. Can we also have job, job fairs? For instance, in our universities, where, um, investors come around to our universities, polytechnics, colleges of education, before these young people graduate, I am not saying give them employment in the university. I am basically saying that, I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry, sir, please, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But please let me just stop, please. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm basically just saying that, since we always have trade fairs, we have people buy things at a very subsidized rate, yes, we can also have job fairs. China did it, it worked for them. I know that some of these youths do not have the capabilities enough to be fully employed. However, when we bring them on, we bring, let's say about, um, University of Ibadan, for example, we bring about 15 investors, basically, quarterly, and we say, okay, fine, these are the youths in engineering, these are the youths, the young people in education, this and this and that. They come ahead. The reason for this job fair is simple. Most times, we always see job specifications requesting for 10 years, um, this experience. It doesn't really work. They can bring them in on internship level, starts for, for, for like one month, when you get, um, um, when you get to know the duties, um, responsibilities in that particular job you are in, then they can be employed. We will not have youths finishing for four years and then they go back to the streets. And I feel that NYSE, yes, is a good initiative. However, sometimes they act against the government's responsibility itself. We can't be in camp and NYSE will be telling us how to jabba. It is against what the presidency wants completely. The presidency wants us to remain here, work here, work for Nigeria. NYSE cannot now be preaching to us that if you want to jabba, for crying out loud, it's absurd, Mr. Speaker. So the second, um, the last thing, the very final thing, thank. Okay. Yes, I'm so sorry, once again. The last thing I want to say has to do with local governments, of course, election. You see, under the fourth schedule, which I'm sure you are very vast with, has to, you see, the, the federal, um, government, the state's government is built on the effectiveness of the local government. There is nothing that we are doing in the federal state that, that can get to the local level if the election process that takes the local government to that seat is not pure. We cannot be, whatever the government is doing on the top, if it doesn't get to the root, to the local government, I believe that the people here will still be clamoring. So thank you so much. My name is Calthar Salawdin, I'm a State Counsel at the Federal Ministry of Justice. And one very last thing, final, final, I feel like it's also my place to advocate for prisoners, please increase their ration in one way, they look too malnourished. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Excellency. I, at this point, would like to invite you to respond to some of the things said. And we also have a social platform where they'll be giving, um, questions and you can get real-time response. That will be announced at the end of this exercise. In the meantime, let's please welcome the convenor of this program. Before then, the Deputy Speaker would want to make some remarks very briefly before the Speaker speaks. Can I please welcome His Excellency, the Right Honorable Benjamin Okeseyokale.
Greatest Nigerian students, greatest Nigerian youths, please, I want to beg you, if you can allow me to sit down, so I can address the sitting down, is that allowed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, before I sit, let me give you a little background. Now, what you are doing here is normal. Whatever you are doing here is expected. It's not funny, it's not fun, and we regret that it is happening as those who are in leadership. We are not happy that it is happening. So your agitation is in order. Your pain that you are expressing is in order. I also was like you some years ago, from university days, as the studio union leader in the University of Calabar. And in my studies also, I became a local government chairman through what you are doing. So in you, I see a lot of local government chairman, I see a lot of House of Assembly members, I see a lot of House of Red members, I even see governors and presidents. Don't, don't underestimate what you are doing. And one thanks I want to give to you is that you have the spirit of patriotism. If you don't love Nigeria, you won't be here. That is the truth. If you don't like this country, you will not sit here from beginning till now. We have not served you best of food, we have not given you best of accommodations. Some of you are standard, but your love for Nigeria has kept you here and for that, I want to say thank you. The problem of Nigeria, I want to also thank the Speaker for not being in America today or in France or in United Kingdom, for being here. Some people run away, those who are supposed to engage with you, but some of us are here to hear your pain, not that all the solutions will come out today, but to show you that we care. And there is no word you speak here today or you have spoken here today that is not being recorded and will not be put to use. We are intentional about this, we are deliberate about this. Today has been a hectic day, you see, we went from here to plenary to solve one national or two national problems and then came back here. There was something we needed to do for the minimum wage to have wheels and we had to summon ourselves, get back, put it in order for the budget to have wheel. That was what we ran out to do. It wasn't as if that we ignored you. We are in this national service for you. The youth and your needs now cannot be overemphasized. If you look at me very well, I am not too old, I am not too young, so I am in between the youth and the advance, so I can relate to your pains very well. I can also understand the effort, the elderly ones, the leaders are making. I appeal to you to please listen to some of the questions asked here was, we are here to hear from you, government, why we should not be on the streets tomorrow? Are you willing to listen to few of them? I urge you to get your paper and put certain things down. Remember, this is not a campaign. Listen, this is not a campaign, the protest has not started, but you need a feedback you will go with. Today, there's nothing that is going to be shared here. We are not sharing money or sharing solutions, but we are communicating. We'll get from you that we'll take back to work with, you'll take from us. That is communication. If it is one-sided where you talk to us and we don't respond, it is not communication, it is information. The difference between information and communication is that information is one-sided. You have informed and then you go. Communication is you talk to me, I respond. So I want to mention few things that this administration has done, which may not be so, uh, comprehensive, but a step to show commitment to better Nigeria. First, let me establish in all fairness, youths are fair, youths believe in justice, youths believe in equality, and you are not going to judge unfairly. Let's be fair. When a woman gets pregnant, she does not give birth the following money. It takes nine months for that pregnancy to birth a child unless it is premature. A reasonable man will be patient with the wife for nine months. A man who is not reasonable will want to kick the woman expecting a child that is not matured. This government is one year in office. I know our pains are real, but look at the effort they have made, we have made so far. Let me say this, on economic initiatives, this government, which have been mentioned by the youth leader of Epis in where he spoke here, I was listening to him, consumer credit scheme. Some of us growing up, we didn't have collateral. When we jabba and went to overseas, if we wanted a house, we got it immediately and use our work to pay. I am also one of those who jabba and came back. And when I jabba, I saw that there was no life. I live in all parts of the world and I came back and said, there is no place like home. We will stay here and we'll solve the problem. And I want to tell you, now, consumer credit scheme approve the first phase, enabling Nigerians to access goods and services upfront, which includes you, and pay overtime, facilitating crucial purchases like home, like vehicles, like education and healthcare. It's in place. It has not been in place since Nigeria started. It was this administration within these 365 years, uh, days of being in office, they have put it in. Find out how you can participate, my brother and my sister. One of the problems we have is that there are policies we can benefit from, but we don't know how to go about it. And others are benefiting while we are on the other side crying. You can buy the car of your dream, buy a home of your dream, you can even rent that home and make an income. Government has made a provision for that. Secondly, this government is fighting. Before it came into place, the production of oil was too low. At the moment, the government is fighting to bring us up to 1.7 million barrels per day so that we can meet up or even go beyond what OPEC is asking. Strategies are in place. That is uneconomic, I don't want to drag it so long, I just want to mention one, two, three, so that you have something you can tell those. I like the person who has that question, what are we taking home? Secondly, security enhancement. Let's be true to ourselves, national security investment by this particular administration is huge. It prioritized national security, leading to significant investment in modernizing and equipping security forces. And the result has started showing. One, hostage and terrorist operation. This government has freed 4,600 hostages within one year. This government has neutralized 9,300 hostile, uh, uh, situations. This government has arrested 7,000 terrorists and bandits within one year. I want to speak to you about agriculture and food security. This government, once they came on board, declared emergency on food security. It wasn't caused by this government, but they saw that it was imminent, it was, it was important to declare that emergency. If there was food in the stores of Nigeria, this government would have declared that emergency. But because it's a government that is sensitive to the needs of Nigerians, the government declared food security emergency and declared this emergency with National Agricultural Development Fund with about 100 billion naira. I'm sure some of you don't know about this, that this government put in 100 billion naira on this. Now, went ahead to launch dry season farming initiative and green imperative program to promote year-round farming, famine. Those in the north will know that dry season farming is a very important aspect of our life. What of energy and natural resources? I want to thank that lawyer that worked with Ministry of Justice, that very energetic lady who spoke now. You are very passionate about Nigeria and the things you are saying, you spoke out of knowledge, very impressive. Very impressive, you know, presentation. You will have a good understanding of subsidy and how it works. And I want to thank you for having such knowledge. Please share that your knowledge with a lot of youths. Many people don't know that subsidy that was removed was for our own good. And the solution she provided here, she said, let us get our refineries back to shape. If we can do that, we have solved the problem instead of depending on subsidy. And that is why this administration, this speaker who is sitting down here, went with us to go and see the only refinery that has started working in Nigeria, which was private sector driven. And we, we did an investigation and we said, he needed support. Within one week, we went to that refinery. And today, that refinery has been giving crude oil, you know, using Naira instead of dollar for them to have access to product. If we didn't care about the high cost of petrol, diesel and all the rest of them, we wouldn't have left the comfort of our homes to go to Lagos for three days. And after our intervention as a caring parliament, that refinery will be having product now, which will drop down the price in the market. And we also push it for Potacot Refinery to be rehabilitated so that there will be no monopoly. We are fighting for other refineries, Cardona Refinery, all of them to come back to life. Because if they start functioning, the price of petrol and diesel on the streets will drop down. This particular government, within this one year in office, in gas production, has targeted increase in gas production to ensure the supply of 500 million standard cubic feet of gas per day. That is resuscitating three out of seven gas processing plant within one year. Seven plants, three are being resuscitated. And why I'm telling you all this, so that you know what to tell your colleagues. Because you came here because you love Nigeria. Even when you spoke with anger, even when you spoke with hot temper, I understand. But we are giving you information that you can verify. Now also compressed natural gas. Nigeria has offered more affordable alternative to petrol and diesel through this presidential compressed natural gas initiative. I'm sure some of you don't know it existed, but it is in place. And what this will do is also to help reduce further the price of oil and gas. What of infrastructure and transportation? Uh, gentlemen and ladies, this government is deliberate about our rails and our highway. And has prioritized, you know, constructing lasting roads. One of them is the one that runs from Lagos down to Calabar. And a whole lot more. Time will not allow me to say that. Now, in order to show their interest in infrastructure, this government came up with what is known as Renewed Hope Infrastructure Fund. Renewed Hope Infrastructure Fund. And do you know how much this government has put into that fund? 25 billion dollars per year. This infrastructure will build road, rail, agriculture, port and aviation. Now let's come to education, which is most of your concern, education and welfare. No other government approved that bill for student loan. It was this government within 100 days in office, 365 days, that approved student loans access to higher education. Please tell your brothers, it has been simplified how you can assess it. Don't think it's meant for the children of big men. No. If you have any problem in assessing it, approach my office and approach the office of the speaker. We will dedicate a special desk, known as the student desk, which will guide you on how you can assess this loan. Please, send this information out. Let them know that we are willing to help you, guide you to assess this loan. And you can imagine what this will do for the populace. What of conditional cash transfer? This government has paid 25,000 to 3.2 million verified poor and vulnerable household. Not the one in paper, but the one for real. I can go on with market money and I can go on with empowered debt clearance. I don't want to go into that because of time. But let me also mention, when it comes to health, it is the responsibility of the government to provide health for our citizens. Do you know how much this government has pumped into health within one year? Basic healthcare provision fund had been redesigned by this government and has attracted the sum of 2.5 billion dollars into financing national primary healthcare system. These things are verifiable. And I want to tell you, there are a lot of more, a lot more for me to mention. Time will not allow us. I want to urge you.
I don't want to talk about what I've heard.
The right to protest is yours. You have every right to protest. It's your right. But remember, all things, all things might be necessary, but not all things are expedient. You have the right to protest, but remember, it is better we build than we destroy. You have a good intention. If I see you on the street tomorrow, I know you love this country. And that is why you are standing there. But can you account for your brother who is beside you? You want to build, you and you and you and you and you. You want to build this country. That is why you are here. But there are so many of them that will join you tomorrow who want to destroy what you are trying to build. How do we stop them? That was why we invited you. We know you are the good ones. We know you that your objective is to heal this country. We know that you love our country. But the question is, the neighbor that will join hands with you tomorrow, is he thinking the way you are thinking? How do you stop him from breaking that transformer that he's going to see on the road? You remember what happened during ANSA's? The objective of ANSA's was good. The initiative was good, but were you able to manage it? You are initiated, you are conscious to just stand on the street to send a message. That others became the messengers of violence and crime. Others were looking for stores to loot. You are not looters. You are not criminals. You are not violent people. You are youths that love your nation. The question that you must go home with today is, how do you account that a man standing by you on the streets tomorrow will be like you? How do you account that the man will not cause a problem that will be put on your head? Because once one finger touches oil, it rubs on the remaining fingers. You mean well, but today? You love your country, but today, nobody has paid you to be on the streets. Are you accounting for the pocket of your brother and your sister out there? Did you follow them last night? What of a week after? Did you join them? That is the question. That if you can answer it well, then you can stand. Because when you stand on the street tomorrow, you are not standing alone. If you are going to stand alone, then we'll be happy that you are only going to exercise your rights. But others will step on the right of others while exercising their own rights. I urge you to have a rethink in implementation of your rights. Answer that question. If you stand tomorrow, can you account for those standing beside you? Thank you very much and God bless you.
Can we do Kulu, 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 Kulu tempo? Can we please give the deputy speaker another resounding applause, please? Please, can we increase the volume of this microphone? Increase the volume of this mic quickly. Thank you so much, Inyabiya. May I then at this juncture invite His Excellency, the listening speaker. He listened, he took notes of so very many things and issues that were raised. In the course of his remarks, he will respond to them just as the deputy speaker did. Can we please applaud Ian Zazal? Your Excellency, the President, the Deputy Speaker, the Speaker rather, of the House of Representatives, as he comes to his podium to give us his remarks. Can we give him four boosa? All right, just before he speaks, can we give him four boosa? One, boosa, boosa, boosa. Thank you, Your Excellency Sir.
Thank you, the great, great Nigerian youth. Thank you, the great, great Nigerian youth. I'm very proud of you. Very proud of your confidence. I'm very proud of your aspiration. I'm very proud of the way you start for One Nigeria. This is all that we are looking for. We do not expect to have you here to pressing or to just say good things that will make us feel happy. Why we gathered you is obviously to hear what you have said. We are not disappointed because you have told us your minds. Thank you so much for being yourself. Thank you so much for educating us. Thank you so much for enlightening us. There are so many things that you have said that we might know subconsciously, but you brought them out for us to be able to know that these are the core issues that we need to tackle in the days and years and months to come. Thank you so much. I want to sincerely apologize on behalf of the National Assembly for not being able to institute such kind of arrangement where the youth and the National Assembly will be engaging. Perhaps if we had thought of this earlier, some of the things that have been said would have been answered and that there would be no need for you to complain. But we have taken, we have listened to you. And I want to assure you categorically that the National Assembly will take the issue of youth engagement and dialogue very seriously as from now. I want to seize this opportunity to tell you that in view of what you have said, I want to give you a personal commitment from the House that will ensure that every year we conduct or organize such kind of engagement twice a year. At the end of each year, we will call you. At the beginning of each year, we will call you. So that between the two engagements, we'll be able to see progresses being made on what you request the government to do. And at the same time, take new issues that might have come up. Please be with us, be more patient with us. We are the House of the people. We are the representatives of the people. We are not representing federal government or the executive. We are representing you, the constituents who are largely the youth. So your issues are our issues. Do not look at us as if we only serve one side. Our primary obligation is to our constituents. That is why we are called representatives. To be with you, to hear your own issues and be able to use those issues and negotiate with the government with the view to getting socours for you people. So please, give us more time. Today, we have learned one critical area that perhaps we have not been able to harness in the future and in the past. And that is effective communication between the youth and the National Assembly. I also realized during this engagement that there is so much communication gap between the youth and the executive. The deputy speaker and some ministers tried as much as possible to bring up some of the major achievements of this government. But I believe maybe the timing of these announcements was not too good. Because a lot of you believe that this engagement is primarily to beg for you not to go on the planned protest. But the truth of the matter is that there is an apparent communication gap. Not only with the youth, but the general populace. So much is being done by this government, but the way it is being disseminated to the people leaves so much to be desired. We would want to encourage the government to also find means and ways of reaching out to the Nigerian people with the view to informing them of the day-to-day progress the government is making. I am sure if that is achieved, so much of our restiveness will be a thing of the past. As I've said earlier, we also want to institute such kind of communication mechanism with the youth by ensuring that every year we have two national youth dialogues. So that we give you the opportunity, don't like the way we have given you today, to ventilate your frustrations if any, to tell us what you expect of us, what direction your government should follow. That I give you the commitment of the House of the people that from this meeting, we have resolved that there will be true international dialogues every year. And to also enhance communication, we also want to do another extraordinary thing. And that is to say, we will give senior legislative positions for to the National Youth Council and other associations. So that those four people will be your representative here in the House. They should be able to tell you what we are doing in the People's House. They should be able to collect from you issues that we may not have seen and bring to also our own attention. So I want to inform you going forward, four slots will be given to the various youth associations to select four people to represent you in the National Assembly, in the House of Reps in particular. So that they will be part of our staff. They will be with us day and night so that they can report you whatever we're doing. If there are corrections to be made by us through them, we'll be able to hear. We don't need to wait until after every six months to hear from you. So this is another commitment I want you to take home with. Again, a lot of issues were discussed here. Who demanded for answers? We do not have all the answers for you. Being your representatives, our major role is to hear your concerns. Not just like the way we do in plenary, where we present motions on behalf of our constituents. We do not have executive power to enforce, but we have the legislative opportunities to take your issues to those who have the power to solve them. So I want to advise all those of you who have one issue or the other, who have made some suggestions, to please help us here by putting those issues that we have discussed in writing so that we can find time to look at them one after the other and see how we can be able to sort them out one after the other. So please, before you leave here, try as much as possible, get the paper right so that we can document your own contribution. And also be able to use those as a platform for us to see how we can be able to sort them out. I want to assure you as well that before we leave here, we intend to have a communicate resolutions reached by you and us on areas and direction that you expect this our great country to follow. Those resolutions that we are going to take will now become the platform, the pillars that will continue to engage the executive in getting more improvement to your own lives and ours and the country as all. Our dear youth, we have no right to tell you not to protest. It is your unconstitutional right to protest when you feel that the government is not serving your purpose. But it is our all right as your representatives to tell you, based on historical antecedents, that in most cases, not in all cases, in most cases, protests do not solve problems. It only takes us backward. We have seen the ANSA's. The Lagos State Government, as we are talking, it would take a probably 10 years to recover from the losses it incurred in the last protest. Responsible protest is desirable. It is always welcome. You people may have good intention to do what you feel will advance democracy and development in Nigeria. But you can never tell, you can never guarantee that hulums will not enter into your own enclaves and use that opportunity to unleash destruction to our own country. We must be careful. Inasmuch as we want to show our anger, show our frustrations, we must have to wait. How we do it, so that it will be a win-win? That the youth will have what it demands and the government will have the honor of also understanding the need of the youth and also reaching forward to do so. Protest in most cases, the way we do it in Nigeria does not often end well. And that is our major concern. That is our major concern. For those who have made up their mind to do it, we urge you, we implore you, to please ensure that while you are embarking on such, you must ensure that you don't allow criminals and hulums to take over your well-meaning protest. If it is hijacked, if it is hijacked by miscreants, the whole essence and focus of what you stand for and what we are looking for might go in vain. So I want to urge you, first and foremost, if you can suspend, if you can shelve it, we will appreciate as your all representatives. And we will guarantee, we will guarantee that all the issues that we have discussed today are brought before the government and actions must be taken by the government to ensure that things get better for this country. But for those who have already made up their mind, they'll come what we'll say here. They have already prepared their mind to embark on the protest. My advice to you is that you should ensure that it is done peacefully. Peacefully and peacefully. We have no objection to that. Protest is one of the main pillars of democracy in every developed economy. Protest is one way of showing the government what it needs to do. We will not be unobliged to you as far as that is concerned. But in so doing, we must be careful not to allow miscreants to hijack and make it violent. And in the process, what you are trying to do for the country, you succeed in destroying it. In destroying it, because some of these protests usually end in destruction. And this country's economy as it is, is so fragile that it cannot afford further shocks, like the way we experienced during the ANSA. So we expect you as our ambassadors to please ensure that if we must have a protest, it is a peaceful protest that will be done within a peaceful environment. Thank you so much for coming. We are very proud that you took your time to come here and be with us. As the DS said earlier, unless you are concerned for the cause of the common man, if not because you are concerned about the socioeconomic development of this country, a lot of you choose to be wherever you are, preparing to do what you want to do tomorrow and beyond. The further you choose to be here, I believe you are here to be part of history. To be part of history where every Nigerian will be able to see the issues that the Nigerian youth are facing and solutions are generated. So I thank you so much for that. And I want to assure you that the people's house will always be with you and it is for you and it will always stand by you. That is a commitment of the House and I'm sure it will be the commitment of the Senate of this particular National Assembly. Thank you so much for coming. May God bless you all. May God take you to your destinations. Thank you. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Please be seated briefly. Take your seats briefly. As, can we please put our hands together for the speaker one more time? Thank you for these initiatives, sir. Very quickly, the deputy speaker. One house, one house, please. One house, please. The deputy speaker, House of Representatives has an announcement to make and I like that we pay attention. Your Excellency.
We want to start working with you from now. So all the organizations in this hall, the secretariat wants you to nominate one, one person that will sit with us to draft the communique. We don't want to impose the communique on you. So we want you to send us representatives from all the organizations here. We will now work on the communique and present it even to Mr. President. So I don't know the heads of all the organization. Once we sing the national anthem and finish, the secretariat will be here and then you will come and give us, you will now... Yeah, SA Youth, yes, come, come please. SA Youth, the speaker is here. So he will be sitting down here with the chief of staff and then we'll get names nominated by you from all the organizations you came to represent. We don't want to read any communique that you did not approve. So you will put it together with your supervision. That's to give you inclusion. And those who will work in that secretariat, from now on, we are going to make you our liaison officers to be engaging with you from time to time. So beyond the communique, there are other engagements that we are going to be having with the youth. We didn't come here to just talk and go. The action starts now. Thank you. The national anthem, please.
Okay, before then, hold on, hold on. Please be seated briefly.
Based on the...
Please be seated, be seated.
Excuse me. I will also want to...
Please, the speaker is talking, please.
...employ you to please use this opportunity before you depart to nominate the four people that will be representing you. I just want to give an advice to that effect. That since we have four slots for you, you can give the north two, the south two. And out of the four slots, let there be two females and two males to represent you. So that the two genders will be well represented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May we rise for the national anthem. Thank you very much. The national anthem, please. Five Bosa for the speaker. Bosa, 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 Bosa.